Programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber cómo, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
Desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visite, porque ha sido nuestra casa, a veces nosotros vamos a Willetts y puede ser en el parque. Gavillega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro, vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo, a veces ya lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz, o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras, y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia, para poder estar tranquilos, así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien, y que las familias estén bien significan niños felices, niños sanos, y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor, entonces está bueno.
I would like to call the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors meeting for June 4th to order. Roll call, please. Supervisor McGordy.
Here.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Here.
Supervisor Hachak.
Here.
Supervisor Jurdie.
Here.
Supervisor Williams.
Here.
I'd like to invite Acting Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector Sarah Pierce to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We are now on Agenda Item 2, Public Expression. Public expression is the portion of the agenda that allows the public to speak for two to three minutes on any items of interest, so long as that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. While members of the public are welcome to address the board, under the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from engaging in deliberation or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. Any member of the board is welcome to add an agenda item to a future calendar by working with the Chair and the Clerk of the Board. If you wish to provide comment on items of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction that are not on the agenda, please come forward at this time, and if you could please form a line at the podium so I can tell how many speakers we have, that's helpful. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak on public expression, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're calling in via telephone. And if you can please state your name at the beginning of your comments for the record, that is helpful. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is David Strach. I'm a planner with the Mendocino Cannabis Department and also a proud member of the Executive Board of SEIU 1021. I know you guys have a lot of important things today, so I'm going to keep it light and brief. I'm here today to highlight the remarkable work and the dedication, the dedicated professionals of Mendocino County's Employment and Family Assistance Services. These individuals are the true heart of our community, providing vital services that uplift and empower our residents. Employment and Family Assistance Services, or EFIS as we affectionately call it, is about supporting our county's most vulnerable populations. They ensure individuals and families have the resources and support they need to find stability and self-sufficiency, whether it's providing emergency assistance, guiding families through the difficult benefits process, or helping with job searches. These folks are tireless advocates for our community. Programs like CalFresh and CalWorks are absolute lifelines in our county, especially in times of recent inflation where many are struggling. CalFresh ensures that no one goes hungry while Medi-Cal provides essential healthcare services without crippling cost. And CalWorks is about empowering struggling households to find employment, securing housing and childcare, and meet their basic needs. These programs, which are funded by federal and state dollars, are more crucial than ever in providing stability and support in our community members during challenging economic times. As of last Friday, I've been with the cannabis department for two years, but I started my journey with the county with CalWorks Job Services in Willetts. During my time there, I had the privilege of witnessing incredible dedication of my colleagues. I remember when a fellow team member took the time to teach a customer of his how to tie a tie for a job interview. Another coworker of mine who had someone who was struggling to finish their four-year degree at Humboldt State, and she provided tireless and endless support for this person. Whether it's showing up early to ensure a single mom receives a gas voucher for an out-of-town job interview, or making sure an applicant who might need counseling gets that counseling, these acts of compassion and dedication exemplify the ethos of our hard-working SEIU members at EFIS. And these are just a few examples of the selfless acts of our members that happen every day. Our community is truly fortunate to have a team of professional eligibility specialists, staff assistants, program managers, employment service representatives, account specialists, social workers, all working tirelessly to ensure residents get the help they need. Whether it's helping folks find work, helping find housing and childcare, or helping someone find counseling they need to finally get out of an abusive relationship, our EFIS workers and our SEIU members make a difference every single day, and I'm proud to stand with them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those comments, and just a reminder, this item is for public expression and will hear consent calendar next after this item.
No gratitude and appreciation?
Good morning. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Mark Donigan, self-healing practitioner, educator, ordained minister, AKA Goldilocks. Gratitude and appreciation always. First, I gotta reprimand CEO for flicking her mic.
Mr. Donigan, if you could just direct your comments to the Chair, thank you.
I didn't appreciate the CEO flipping her mic last session at Supervisor Williams. Anyways, I wanted to throw in a monitment out before I gave gratitude and appreciation, which I can't give if I didn't really feel it. And I really feel it in this room today, and I don't always think the public understands how much everyone in this room does. And this week I happened onto another meeting I've never been into, McCock, and Supervisor Jurdie was... You know, he explained all that to me this morning, and I appreciate the time that you people give me and that you give the public. And again, I don't think they understand that there's a free line, I think, to each and every one of you. And my gratitude and appreciation this week is for Mo, your birthday tomorrow. All the things that you've done for me, all the things that you've done for this county. Rarely have I been under such a good leader. If I was in the military, they would be writing long reports about all the things that you do for us. And it's unfortunate that you're the only one out there promoting yourself, and that anytime any one of you tried to do anything, that you get shot down. And my biggest gratitude and appreciation right now is to Sarah Pierce for what she's done and what she was thrown into and where she brought us today. Everybody has their numbers, far as I know. And I'm sorry if I'm talking out of line on any items that are being talked about today, but that's my gratitude and appreciation. Is everything that's happening today on the budget wouldn't be possible if we hadn't gone through the chaos of this last year and all of the stuff that's been thrown at each and every one of you, and it was unfair every single time. Those people do not show up here. I do. And, you know, they're throwing rocks at me right now, and that's cool, because when they're throwing rocks at me, they don't got time to throw rocks at you. And what they don't understand is I'm the only person in this room, pretty much, that's not being paid to be here. And so I hope, again, the public that does listen will put out the proper word that everybody in this room's heart is in the right place, what they're saying is true, and it should be heard because it's put on the public record for a reason. I don't like it being out in the media, being reframed. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see one hand raised online. I'm going to continue to take comments in the room before I go online, so this is for public expression items, not on the agenda.
Good morning. My name is Joe Scriven. I work for the Mendocino County Resource Conservation District, and I'm here to provide just a brief update on two projects that the county contracted with our RCD a couple of years back. So when the PG&E settlement funds came through for the 2017 Redwood Complex fire, the county arranged a funding program to allot funds to various projects to help the fire-affected community of Redwood Valley and Potter Valley. And so my RCD submitted two applications that were approved by the county. One was for road storm proofing in Redwood Valley, and that was completed in 2023, and we just finished off the final report yesterday and sent that to the office here. And that project was a 3.8 miles of road storm proofing and upgrading, which is a water quality protection project within the West Fork Russian River. And that was an important aspect of the post-fire recovery because a lot of the roads during fire responses got damaged. And so by upgrading and repairing these unpaved roads, it protects water quality, but also improves the safety for the families and emergency response vehicles, and also reduces significantly the costs for maintenance for these road networks. So that project was what we consider a success, and I wanted to highlight the two companies that we worked with during that time. That was Diamond D Construction, based here in Ukiah. They did a great job. They worked well with the landowners, and our landowners were very happy to work with them. And Pacific Water Set Associates did the construction management for that project, and we have a relationship with them that has been very positive over the past 20 years. The other project we just wrapped up is the hazardous tree removal project within the fire footprint in Redwood Valley. And with that contract, we removed over 1,000 hazardous trees that were determined to be hazardous to families or infrastructure. And that project involves removal of hazardous trees along the county right of way of Tomcay Road... Oh, I'm fast. I'm talking too slow. Tomcay, East West, and Road J. And the companies that worked on that were Johnson's Quality Tree Care and Family Tree Service. And I have to give a big shout out to our colleagues at Lakewei Associates who helped make that project a success. And I just wanted to share with you all that those two projects were important to help the families who were recovering from that tragedy from 2017, and that was a good thing. So I just wanted to say thank you all, and I look forward to working with the county in the future. All right?
Thank you. We appreciate all your work. I believe Supervisor McGordy, we have a question or a comment?
Another comment. I just wanted to thank the Mendocino County RCD for all the monitoring work that they're doing for the Ukiah Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency to show that we're compliant with groundwater sustainability laws. Your efforts are much appreciated and very professional.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be here today. I would now move online to public expression, and so just for anybody in the room, this is the time for public expression for items that are not on the agenda. And for anybody online, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your phone. I'm going to go first to Andy Corin and then Julie Beardsley.
Hello, am I online now?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Mulhern, Supervisor Jurdie, hashtag McGordy and Williams, and interim County Council Ross and CEO Darcy Antle. I'm speaking as a retired county health officer, as a past executive committee member of the Mendocino County Public Health Advisory Board, McFAB, as a citizen of the Mendocino County for 35 years and as a family physician for 48 years in private practice in several public clinics. It is my understanding that a plan is under consideration to merge the Department of Public Health and the Department of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. This is a very bad idea for many reasons. Public health and behavioral health are completely different enterprises. It would be like asking a psychiatrist to direct the Department of Surgery. Behavioral health takes a clinical therapeutic approach to disease that is mostly funded for services rendered. Public health, on the other hand, is for prevention. What should be prevented? Epidemiology is needed to tell a county what the vulnerabilities are and prioritize them, most of these being social determinants of health, things that have not happened yet and could never be built for. So support comes from getting grants, and the work is one of organizing our community in its own self-defense. When I was CEO, I observed that behavioral health was getting significant grants and hiring, while Department of Public Health barely retained the programs, and we had no resources to find and apply and implement grants to help the community. The current leadership has dragged its feet on hiring another health officer since I gave notice a year ago. We lost several good candidates for public health director when they saw the current level of disarray and active undermining. Morale has fallen and staff has left. Good senior staff people with public health credentials, connections to the community with training and experience because they were ignored, or in some cases, excellent staff were fired because of recommendations at odds with management. There has been clear favoritism in hiring and promotions and coercion, supporting a clique in leadership. I understand that you've been presented with a letter from staff supporting the current proposal. I also understand that coercion was needed for many of those signatories. When I discussed these issues with Dr. Miller, she said, "Well, sometimes you just have to clear the decks to build a department." I don't think that we can afford the collapse of our preventive health assets, and I really want you to not merge these departments. Instead, I request that you form a new Mendocino County Public Health Advisory Board to give public health direction and governance. It is from concerned and informed citizens that you, our Board of Supervisors, can get an impartial assessment that doesn't come through the lens of departmental managers with vested interests in continuing the same direction for their own sakes. And I'll end at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Beardsley.
Can you hear me?
You can be heard.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the Board, CEO, Antle County Council, and staff. My name is Julie Beardsley, and I am the retired Senior Public Health Analyst who provided your epidemiological data for the almost eight years that I was employed by Mendocino County Public Health. In that time, I have seen our health statistics decline. We are now number one in opioid deaths. Our suicide rate is three or more times that of the state. We have a problem with homeless mentally ill people wandering our streets, and we have enormous poverty here, which is the driver of many of these problems. Over, during the decade, over a decade, the Dr. Miller has been the Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Our statistics have grown worse and worse. Now you are contemplating making her a psychologist with no public health training.
Julie, I think that you're commenting on an item that's been agendized, and so if you could just pause there. That item is agendized as Item 4B.
I want to, I would like to speak in public speaking, please. This is an important issue. You're planning on joining public health and behavioral health. Public health needs to be the overarching department with behavioral health underneath it. The tail should not be wagging the dog, and the health department must be overseen by someone with public health training and experience. I urge the Board to set aside any decisions about combining these departments until an independent outside study is conducted. The public's help is too important to not consider very carefully the outcomes of future changes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and just for the public that may be listening, the Item 4B is actually related to a single position of a director, which will be heard later. The conversation that the Board has had for several months about having the Public Health and Behavioral Health Services merged together has been occurring throughout budget conversations. There was a lengthy presentation presented by the department at our last meeting. If anyone is looking for those documents, they can find them on our agenda. So with that, I'm going to move on from public expression. I'm not seeing anyone else come forward, and I don't see any hands raised online. So we are now on to the consent calendar. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established.
Thank you. Are there any supervisors that wish to pull an item for separate consideration, Supervisor Williams and Supervisor Jurdie?
No.
Okay, Supervisor...
Just for comment, not for a separate vote.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank Acting Controller, Auditor, Sarah Pierce for having a meeting with me and the consultants on the County Treasury, allowing me to get a number of questions answered with her and with the consultant. And I just want to report back that it's really clear to me that the County Treasury, which is mostly actually not even county dollars, it's mostly school district dollars, that the department is investing the money in investment vehicles that are allowed by state law, but that are also returning as good a return as can be expected for those types of, you know, federal bonds, et cetera, that are really low risk or no risk, and that they're... The only issue that really is something that they are working on that potentially could improve returns a little bit is just their efforts that are ongoing to try to minimize the amount of money that's not in interest-bearing accounts, like a checking account, and to keep that number as small as possible so that the money, as much money as possible, can be in interest-bearing accounts. So I just want to report back that my discussion with the Auditor Treasurer and with the consultants shows to me that they're doing everything they possibly can to get the most from the County Treasury investment.
Thank you. We really appreciate that report back. I'm not seeing any hands raised, so what I'd like to do at this point is invite public comment on the consent calendar for anybody that may be here for a proclamation that was on the consent calendar or any other items that are on the consent calendar that would like to come forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kirk Lumpkin. I am here as a representative of the Mendocino County Poet Laureate Committee. We have been, we took nominations, got over 30 over the county. After that, people who were nominated could put in an application. We did interviews, and we are so proud and thankful that a wonderful candidate came forward in the person of Deveraux Baker to be our county's very first poet laureate. And if you want to follow her work and find out about it in the future, over the next two years while she is our poet laureate, go to mendocino poet laureate dot M Y M C N dot org. And it is now my pleasure and honor to introduce to you the first poet laureate of Mendocino County, Deveraux Baker, who's going to read to you a short poem.
Thank you. It's an honor to have this title. I really am looking forward to representing the county. Imagining Peace. All morning, we worked in the kitchen, bared our feet, rolled up our sleeves, prepared loaves of bread, imagining a recipe for peace. We held the world in our hands, rolling out the dough, pressing and flattening, pulling and shaping. We added spices for a good life, cardamom and cumin, sesame and tears. We stirred in sorrow and joy a dash of hope to bless the shape of this bread. We imagined creating the taste of peace to feed a world hungry for solace in a time of war and loss. We conjured tables in olive groves, recreating a feast for all migrant tongues with margarine and soul, rosemary or thyme. We wanted to toss crumbs to birds so they were filled with a song they would carry in flight across the rooftops of the world and help share our recipe for all people hungry for peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Deveraux. Good morning. If you could please state your name for the record.
Yeah, good morning, members of the Board, Chair Mulhern, CEO Antle. My name's Jesse Van Voris. I'm a Senior Program Manager in the Adult and Aging Services Division of the Department of Social Services. I'm here to speak on Item 3Y, which is the proclamation recognizing June as Elder Independent Adult Abuse Awareness Month. Statewide, June 15th is recognized as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and here at the county, we recognize the entire month of June. Staff will be doing some outreach events at senior centers, getting the word out in the community about the importance of reporting elder independent adult abuse. Historically, abuse is under-reported. Statistics show that only one in 10 instances of abuse are reported. In Mendocino County, we have a small but mighty team of dedicated social workers who work for Adult Protective Services, responding countywide 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. Last year, we received over 1,400 reports of abuse, which is an increase of 200 year-over-year from last year. 900 of those reports required investigation and intervention with a 10-day response. So I just want to bring awareness to elder independent adult abuse, its prevalence in the community, and the hard work that our Adult Protective Services staff and social services do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all that you do for us and the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. If you could please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Darren Jackson. Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor, CEO, and staff. I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Ukiah Unity Coalition, and we would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for your recent proclamation of claiming Pride Month here in Mendocino County and your decision allowing the Pride, the Progress Pride flag to be displayed in the city of Ukiah. This gesture symbolizes our community commitment to inclusivity and diversity and marks a significant moment of progress within our beloved city. Your support sends a powerful message of unity and acceptance, fostering a welcoming environment of all residents and visitors alike. It is actions like these that helps build a stronger and more connected communities. Again, thank you for your leadership and your standing with the LGBT community in Mendocino County. Your efforts are appreciated and will be remembered as a pivotal step of equality and understanding in Mendocino County. And in addition, we would like to offer the pride pens for the Board and for your staff to wear in solidarity for LGBT community and supporting LGBTQ youth here in Mendocino County. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. If you could please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Izzy Allen Kirsch. I'm 21 years old, and I was born and raised in Ukiah in Redwood Valley. I identify as pansexual and gender queer, and I accept all pronouns. Growing up, I faced judgment and discrimination pertaining to my identity and differences in various ways. I never looked, acted, or presented myself as what many would consider a typical girl, and that really seemed to bother people, whether it be my peers, their parents, or even some select teachers. The uncommon evidently makes folks feel uneasy in a world where the pursuit... the pursuit of happiness is thought to be paralleled to the pursuit of fitting in. I've experienced firsthand what it's like to not fit in. And coming from a family of eight siblings, three of which are queer, I know how detrimental that can be from various perspectives. In fact, I know that things could have been so much worse for me. I have heard personal accounts of absolute atrocities, historical recounts of violent crimes. Unfortunately, those types of injustices are not merely historical. There are kids across this nation who are facing similar terrors to this day in the second and in this community. I work as a youth development specialist at the Arbor Youth Resource Center here in Yukaya and in my three years in youth services, I have watched queer children and young adults experience nightmares awakened. I can assure you that that type of discrimination is prevalent in this county and that is why we need initiatives like this proclamation. It's moments like this that bring hope to the hearts of kids living in fear, living in homes that disallow them from loving themselves, living in school systems full of ignorance and starved of support, living on streets because sleeping on pavement is safer than sleeping in their own warm beds. This is why we're here today, because simple acts like this are stepping stones towards saving young people from that, saving young people from that fear. Acts like this save lives by making it safe to just simply feel, simply be ourselves. I would like to leave you with a quote by one of my favorite authors, "A queer black man who loved loudly when doing so was a death sentence." The late James Baldwin said, "You have to go by the way your blood beats. If you don't live the life, the only life you have, you won't live some other life, you won't live any life at all." I say this quote and support this proclamation in hopes that these words and actions echo through this room, through these walls, and into the hearts of the children that are crying to hear it. Please go out and live your life by the beat of your own blood. Love loudly so that everyone around you may feel safe enough to do the same. Thank you.
So much Izzy. Supervisor McGurty.
Just a quick comment. So the fictional character Harry Bosch, the detective, talks about marginalized people and says, "Either everybody counts or nobody counts." It's something I truly believe and I support folks who are marginalized or not accepted by society for being odd or different.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on anything on the consent calendar? Item number three. Seeing no one come forward and I do have one hand raised online. If you're online and wish to comment on the consent calendar, you can use the raise hand feature on the Zoom platform or press star nine. And I have Anna Marie Steinberg.
Hi, I wasn't sure if I should be speaking now. I want to address three N on the consent calendar. I sent in a public comment on it. Is that when I'm supposed to speak, when you hear three N, or am I supposed to speak now?
Correct, you're supposed to speak now. We are on the consent calendar, which is all of the items labeled three.
Well, there's a lot of items on the consent calendar, that's for sure. I want to, I want to address the county's investment policy and I've been looking at it for several months now. A lot of the reason why I looked at it is because of what's going on on the college campuses and other city and county entities that are facing what's going on in Gaza. And I learned that there was, we have an investment policy where we discourage certain items that the county would invest in. And I sent you a public comment on that. One of the, it says, it says that you just added fossil fuel, which I think is wonderful because of the climate crisis as something that you discourage being invested in. You also discourage being invested in manufactured fossil fuel, manufacturer of tobacco products, firearms, or weapons not used in our national defense. So I've looked at our investments over twenty twenty-four so far and all of twenty twenty-three and I saw investments that raised issue with and seemed contradictory to the investment policy. The number one company that I saw was Caterpillar. And Caterpillar, I sent you the information on Caterpillar. Caterpillar is, falls under weapons not used in our national defense. And I urge the supervisors and Sarah Pierce and Chandler to look at Caterpillar and look to see if we should really be invested in Caterpillar. Also, the Royal Bank of Canada is the largest contributor to the fossil fuels. And fossil fuels are, you know, we all are facing the imminent crisis that climate, 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 the climate crisis causes us. And I'd like you to look at Royal Bank of Canada and I gave you some information in my public comment. Also, I'd like you to look at Bank of America, who's the number four person, entity for climate crisis. Anyway, look at my public comment, I see I'm running out of time.
Thank you, Anna Marie. Yes, your public comment, there's one additional public comment that is also on the website that everybody can take a look at. So thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on items on the consent calendar? Seeing no one come forward, I have a pinup from Supervisor Hasek and Williams. Supervisor Hasek, did you have an item?
No, I was going to move approval.
Okay.
Consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Can we vote by the button?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to Agenda Item 4A. Discussion and possible action including acceptance of informational reports from the Assessor Clerk, Recorder, Registrar, Voters, Acting Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, District Attorney, Sheriff, or other county department heads or designees. So I'm just looking to the audience and CEO Antle, do we have any scheduled reports today? Okay, I do not have any reports or updates today, thank you. We will now move on to item 4B. Discussion and possible action including ratification of motion to waive Rule Number Twenty-seven of the Rules of Procedures to reconsider, Agenda Item 4F, 4I, from the May seven, twenty twenty-four Board of Supervisors Meeting and discuss, discussion and possible action including adoption of resolution amending the position allocation table as follows. Budget Unit Forty-Fifty, add one FTE Director of Health Services. Salary range one hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-three to one hundred and ninety-seven six hundred and twenty dollars annually and delete an FTE for Director of Behavioral Health and delete an FTE for Director of Public Health. Deputy CEO Sheri Johnson.
Yeah, good morning Chair, Members of the Board, CEO Antle, Interim County Council James Ross, Sheri Johnson Deputy CEO. As Chair mentioned, the motion to waive Rule Number Twenty-seven of the Rules of Procedure and we're asking of amendment to the position allocation table by adding one FTE Director of Health Services following the establishment of the classification at the Board of Supervisors Meeting on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. This item, as I had mentioned, is an administrative cleanup as the position in December was not added to the position allocation table due to an error in the resolution. Human Resources is asking to add the position on the position allocation table, establish the salary based on the three comparator counties, and delete one FTE Director of Behavioral Health and delete one FTE Director of Public Health. And if I could, Chair, I would like to make sure that I wanted to clarify a statement that the departments are not merging, so Public Health and Behavioral Health are not merging. So it's an integration of the administrative services positions. So as Dr. Miller had mentioned in the, I think, the May twenty-first meeting, there was some fiscal constraints with the administrative positions. So merging these positions helps with the budget constraints. So there is the org chart that she did provide too, that I think is a good description of what is happening with the departments. So thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, I don't see any other supervisors with their pins up, but the board taking this action can be changed at some point later by another board if it was determined that we needed to hire two separate individuals, correct?
If the direction wants to add positions, that we could look at that, yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any pins up from the board, so I will go to public comment. Are there any members in the room that wish to speak on public comment? If you are calling in on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your telephone. If you're here to speak under this item, please come forward. And if you could state your name for the record, that's helpful.
Mark Donigan. Is this about merging Public Health and Behavioral Health?
So that was what Deputy CEO Sheri Johnson said. It's not a merger of Public Health and Behavioral Health. It is to have one full-time director over Health Services, so one administrative position over both departments.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, my public comment on it is that Dr. Miller is an exceptional person that I've known for over a year now on the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. And it's come to me often, watching you all work, especially you Mo, that we have to wear many hats here and a good leader delegates and that's what I've seen her do. I don't know about all of the complaints that are normal in this type of process and I'm absolutely sure, because I've said it before, the public didn't understand when this, that's myself, because it's kind of muddy, but this was done in December. So Dr. Miller's been doing this for a while now. And as a person, a recipient on the end of this stuff, because I see it at Hotel California, because we receive a lot of services. What I've seen is good morale and I've seen better services. I've seen the workers extending themselves further to the residents at Hotel California, which I really appreciate because, you know, some of us aren't going to make it. Some of us already haven't made it. So I appreciate all of the gratitude and appreciation from all these workers that have come forward and they're going to come forward. And again, I wish the public would look at that rather than the few people that are so vocal and so loud. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Chair Mulherin, Supervisors, CEO Antle. My name is Catherine Reel and I'm a supervising public health nurse with the Mendocino County Public Health Department. As a current employee, I am here today to reflect on changes in our public health department. Thanks to recent changes in both our leadership and our structure, we're experiencing greater efficiency, soaring morale, revitalization of programs, and more collaboration between departments than many of us have ever seen. I want to take this moment to thank you all for your continued support as we trust that you will make the right decision to continue the good work that you all set in motion in December. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, CEO Antle. My name is Jill Als. As I've said before, I've worked in the Behavioral Health Building and Public Health Building for many years. I've seen the change in morale. I've seen the change in staff and the services we provide since this crossover has happened. I don't call it a merge, I call it an integration and a happy integration. This room would be filled today if we didn't have services that had to be provided. All of our staff would be in this room. But many of the staff have to be there doing the jobs that you gave us to do. It doesn't take a specialized person to lead a body of people. It takes a leader. And that's what we're here to say today is we're happy with the leader we have right now. We're happy with the changes that were made. This wasn't something that we made the decision to do. It was a body of people hired than us that made that decision. It's us that's going to make the services happen as employees and it's our leader that's going to support us to be the best we can be in the services we provide. So I recommend that the board make the decision today to let us choose our leader and let us be the best we can be in the services we provide. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, my name is Karen Lovato. I am an acting deputy with Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, serving mental health beneficiaries in Mendocino County for over twenty-two years. When behavioral health and public health managers were asked to help reduce redundancies and increase efficiencies in light of projected budget shortfalls and restricted hiring, we put in extra hours to create a plan, many our own hours, built relationships with our public health partners and learned their programs and have worked to increase collaboration in order to leverage funding and maximize services to the public. I understand that as a board, you're a single body with multiple minds, different priorities, and that you answer to almost ninety thousand diverse opinions. While I appreciate the desire to make this decision with due diligence and input, I know from experience that when we face budget shortfalls like we are, either people get cut or programs get cut, and often both. I don't believe anyone wants services to the public in either behavioral health or public health to be cut if we can avoid that. We were asked to find efficiencies, so we worked together to create a collaborative management team to find continued efficient ways to collaborate and leverage existing staff and resources and save jobs to meet budget constraints and serve our shared community. It's your prerogative to change the direction, but please know that you'll be undoing the work and effort that we have put in and more importantly, potentially jeopardizing the benefit to clients and community. We anticipate even greater budget impacts with the governors may revise. When you consider this item, I just ask that you continue the direction you've set in motion and the hard work that Behavioral Health and Public Health have been doing to create a reality for the best possible outcome for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Mulherin, Supervisors, and CEO Antle. My name is Isabel Gallego and I'm an acting staff services administrator for Mendocino County Public Health and Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department. I am here to express the changes made by leadership that have positively impacted the environment between the two departments. In the most recent months, I have actively seen the commitment, understanding, and guidance from the leadership team to create a better and healthy work environment. I have witnessed firsthand, as a public health employee and a behavioral health employee, the increased collaboration between programs and staff, the boost in morale, increased productivity, and a sense of appreciation. This was all possible due to our Director, Dr. Janine Miller. I encourage you all to continue to support the wonderful staff and leadership team in public health by having Dr. Miller oversee both Departments of Public Health and Behavioral Health. I am confident that Behavioral Health Departments and Public Health are headed towards a bright and new future. I am grateful for the leadership team and I'm grateful for the directors for putting all the work that you see them every day, working long hours. I have no doubt in my mind that I will be an employee for Behavioral Health and Public Health for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to take, it looks like one more comment in the room before we move on to online comments. So if you could please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning, my name is Tao Phi. I am a program manager for Public Health and Behavioral Health. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors, Chair, CEO Antle, and staff for having us here. I am also speaking from the perspective of the other roles I have in the community. I'm a planning commissioner for the city of Yukaya. I am a lifelong community member at the City of Ten Thousand Buddhas and I am a resident of Mendocino County for the last ten years. So also, I work at Public Health and Behavioral Health as one of the program managers. I am currently overseeing community wellness and prevention and equity. These are areas where it makes perfect sense for the coordination between Public Health and Behavioral Health and reducing inefficiencies and collaborating together. I was hired under the former Public Health Director Anne Mulgarde and worked alongside with the other public members you have heard from. I was around when we were I was around when we were trying to hire a Public Health Director and despite all the tries, there was no success. I think we've seen in this county that we want greater staff. We want to fill our staff and it's been a difficult job to fill. So I witnessed the Public Health Staff trying to hire the next Public Health Director and to no success. Dr. Janine Miller stepped up during a time where we needed more leadership. I'm not using the analogy correctly, but it's the putting the cart before the horse situation where I know, you know, if we could have done staffing differently, we tried to and we couldn't. So we made the best of the situation from where we were at. Dr. Janine Miller has stepped up and helped us collaborate more, helped us look at areas where it makes sense to do coordination. The staff at the Public Health and Behavioral Health Departments know what we do is a difficult job. We're trying to serve our community and it's not easy. We're doing the best with what we can. And I hope you'll, the Board and the executive staff will continue to support us in that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to now turn to online commenters. First I have Andy Coran and then Jennifer Luge. And if there are any members of the public that wish to speak that are in the room, if they could stand or come near the mic so I can notice them, that'd be great. If you're online and wish to comment on this item, you can use the raise hand feature on the Zoom platform or use star nine on your telephone. Andy Coran?
Thank you, Mo, and the rest of the Board of Supervisors, CEOs, Antol, et cetera. I really think that this is a bad idea and a bad time coming. I think what this change that looks just administrative will affect is the elimination of Public Health as an entity, despite what people have said that it's just an administrative merger. What has happened in the past six months since Janine has been at the helm has been elimination of any, or most of the mature, credentialed Public Health servants that we've had in the county and replacing them with other employees. And the danger is that we're going to lose a Public Health perspective. Having Mental Health or Behavioral Health Recovery Services at the helm, as in the Director of Health Services, will make our Public Health Department more like a medical department and approaching things from a therapeutic point of view. Yes, it has become more organized and has become less controversial within the department because of the elimination of many of the employees who are making other recommendations that were much more consistent with the needs of Public Health rather than just the defense of a leader and making the administration and the budget smoother. So I really think that this proposal would be a nail in the coffin of Public Health for our community and that would be at a great, great loss. I don't think that a Behavioral Health or anyone who doesn't have Public Health credentials can really serve as the Director of Health Services. If anything, a Director of Health Services should be overriding both Behavioral Health and Public Health, but has to have some academic as well as practical experience and appreciation of Public Health principles. And I think at this point, if we make the Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services the Director of Health Services, we're actually going to be adding another salary for a Director of Public Health. It'll probably be a Deputy Director or somebody like that who has some appreciation for Public Health. But I think this is a bad idea and I think it's another part of the, you know, it's almost like administrative bullying at this point. And that's what's gone on in the last six or seven months. So I'll let that stand. I'm really against, I know that there's been a lineup of people speaking for it and all the things that have gone so far in the last few months. But I think that's a facade and the reality will not be good for Mendocino County and for Public Health. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer?
Hello, can you hear me?
You can be heard.
My name is Jennifer Lucky. I have been with Mendocino County Public Health for five years. I was not prepared to speak today. I do not have a script. I just felt like I should share also my experience after hearing others. And I work in Community Wellness Prevention, working specifically with the CalFresh Healthy Living Grant. I, starting out with Mendocino County, I started with the Dream Team and an amazing leadership supervisor, Tina Tyler O'Shea. And that quickly changed when we had different people take over in our management. And it was very difficult for me to stay with Public Health. I almost left many times. For the first time since Janine Miller has stepped up, I can speak from my experience and for the first time, I'm feeling like I might be able to finish a career within Public Health because it is a difficult position, what Janine Miller has been doing. And it's hard to come on and try and make change. Change is not easy. People do not like to make change. We've had employees of 10-plus years and they are so comfortable in their position that they are not getting out in the community any longer. They are remaining at their desk and prevention cannot be done at a desk. We need to get out into the community. Janine has been working on making change to where we are out in the community, providing that public service as we should be. I have felt alone these last couple of years. No team. It's so difficult to go out in the community, make change by myself. Having a team of players that don't, that aren't, we just have had no direction. We've had no direction of what we should be doing within our positions with lack of, just lack of that leadership of experience. And since Janine has came on, I feel that she's really been pushing, creating that team. We have people now getting out, learning, getting training so that we can better serve our community. So I am appreciative and I'm thankful. I apologize for not being prepared or having a script. I don't have the proper language today as I am just jumping and providing unprepared speech. But I am thankful that I feel that Janine has been working on making changes so that we are out there making the best we can for the community. And I thank you for all you guys' time. It's a lot of hard work. So thank you for everything you're doing. I do see light at the end of the tunnel.
Thank you for your comments. Julie Beardsley?
On mute, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I want to follow up on what Dr. Coran said. I believe that the employees at Public Health are very well-intentioned. I believe that Janine Miller is very well-intentioned. But I also know that Public Health is a specialized field that requires years of training and experience. And I believe that there is an old adage, "You simply don't know what you don't know." And in this case, you have supervised, you've got Behavioral Health Staff that are supervising almost all the Public Health units. There's no effort being made to train these new employees in the principles, science, and methodology of Public Health. And this is a recipe for disaster. Bird flu, for example, could well become the next COVID-19 pandemic. It's already jumping from birds to animals to humans. In a small county like ours, it does make sense to combine administrative functions. And why not add social services too? And the most important thing is running the day-to-day functions of Public Health. You need somebody, whether it's Public Health or whether it's a Health Department, you need somebody who is trained in the principles of Public Health. And unfortunately, there is very, there are very few, if any, Behavioral Health Staff who are now overseeing Public Health who have that training. This is not a good situation and I want to stand with Dr. Coran and recommending that you take a long look at what you're doing because this could have really disastrous implications in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any hands raised online. I'm not seeing anyone come forward to the podium. Supervisor Hashak?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Supervisor Jody for reconsidering this, bringing this back for our consideration as a board. I want to appreciate Dr. Miller too for bringing the charts and everything about how the two Departments will function going forward. And really, the kind of the bringing together of some of the administrative functions. Because that's really what we ask of her. To save money and to balance a budget that we're going to have to do later on in this meeting. You know, those are some of the measures that we've had to take. I don't think that it will be detrimental to Public Health. Certainly hope not. And I appreciate that idea from Dr. Coran about a Public Health Advisory Board. I think that might help to keep things on track and make sure that there's communication between the public and the Public Health Department. But really, what we're dealing with right here is we're just doing this cleanup. We, in December, we approved this position of a Director of Health Services and all we're doing is adding it to the allocation table. So that's really what we're dealing with right here. So I'll move approval of the recommended action.
I'll second the motion now, just reference for members of the audience who may not be tracking everything closely. At our last meeting, we did have under reports from Departments, we had an attachment to that agenda item, a presentation from the Dr. Miller that showed that the administrative functions with the two Departments were made more efficient by reducing the administrative costs by about $1.8 million. And that's really what we've been asking all of the Departments to look for is, is there a way that your department can reduce administrative expenses so that services to the public aren't reduced? And so that's what we saw at our last meeting. It's not attached to this item, but we did see it at last meeting and it was available for review and comment by any member of the public since our last board meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that that was noted.
Thank you. Before we vote, Supervisor McGordy, did you have a comment?
I do. So I agree with Supervisor Jody that actually having organizational chart was extremely helpful. I also agree with Dr. Coran and Supervisor Hashak that having a citizen advisory board, much like BHAB, would be really useful for this department to be sure that they're functioning properly. And if that takes a separate motion or study, I'd be supportive of it and it would end a lot of my concerns about this issue.
I actually, I want to check with the Clerk because I'm pretty sure we already have a Public Health Advisory Board or we voted to not have a Public Health Advisory Board the last time that we just updated Boards and Commissions. So that either does exist or has existed in the past. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I came to support this item. Hearing Dr. Coran definitely gives me some pause. I don't want a nail in the coffin for our Public Health. And this morning, I did have some other contact from people with medical backgrounds who also gave me some pause. I'm not necessarily against it and I hear a lot of employees think this is the right way to go. We definitely need to save on administrative costs. I guess I would be more inclined to support the motion if it could include giving direction for the creation of a Public Health Advisory Board to come back. It probably needs to be noticed. But if we could include direction to bring it back for deliberation and a vote at a future meeting, I think I could support this item.
Okay, do the first and second agree to that?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, so I did hear that we had one in the past. What I would just say is that I sit on over 21 boards and commissions on behalf of this Board of Supervisors. And I want to make sure that whatever kind of commission or oversight board is developed is productive and helpful and not detrimental to the department. I have taken the time to go to the department to learn about what they're doing, to see the combination of the outreach programs, to try to understand the combination of the administration. And I think that moving forward in this way is important and will be helpful to our community. And I'm not opposed to forming a Board and Commission. I just want to make sure that it's useful for the community and the department. So I did hear the first and second agree to that and that would be coming forward at a future meeting date and time. And with that, we can vote by the button.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody from the public and the Departments that have participated in this conversation. I think that we've had a robust community dialogue and moving forward, we'll be able to share out more information with our community about the collaboration between the two Departments. So thank you, everybody. What I would like to do is hear item 4C and then we'll take a brief break before we get into item 4D. So item 4C is a Notice Public Hearing, Discussion, and Possible Action, including Approval of Presentation of Mendocino County Air Quality Management District's Budget pursuant to California Health and Safety Code 40131 and Possible Direction to Staff. So at this point, the Board of Supervisors will go into recess for item 4C and will convene as the Board of Directors of the Air Quality Management District. The Mendocino County Board of Supervisors does not receive any additional compensation or stipend for acting as the Board of the Mendocino County Air Quality Management District. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established and all correspondence has been sent to your emails.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to open the public hearing and we will receive a staff presentation at that point. The Board can ask questions. Then we'll have public comment or public input on the item and then we'll bring it back to the Board. So, good morning, gentlemen. If you could please state your name for the record and begin the presentation.
Good morning, Board. I'm Doug DeHart, the interim Air Pollution Control Officer. And this is-
I'm Ephraim Lopez, Deputy Air Pollution Control Officer for Mendocino County Air Quality Management District. So I'm going to start this and then Ephraim's going to take over. So the Mendocino County Air Quality Management District does maintain an effective and active air management program. Our goal is to protect Public Health and Welfare of the populace of Mendocino County and the North Coast Air Basin. This is a shared mission for State, with State and federal agencies. The District has primary responsibility for stationary air pollution sources in the Mendocino County area. And we share some authority with State and federal agencies as well. We are part of a designated air basin, which is the North Coast Air Basin, which we share with Northern Sonoma County, Mendocino, and the North Coast, Eureka, three counties up to the north of us. Our goal is to maintain all ambient air quality standards, national and state level, and to establish flexibility for local businesses and entities to comply with all those standards. Just as a note, the National Ambient Air Quality Standard is changing and so that's something that we'll give you a brief update with this budget item in just a minute. But just as a heads up, that is happening and it is going to affect us significantly, at least in workload and hopefully not in our businesses. But we're working on that. Now, this referenced hearing is in compliance with California Health and Safety Code, Section 40131. We're required to have a legally noticed draft budget hearing with a 30-day notice and to accept public comment. And this needs to be done at least two weeks ahead of adopting the final budget. So that's why we're here. So with that, you know, the, I will hand that, just taking my notes and make sure I covered everything. I'll hand it over to Ephraim to go over the details of the budget and then we'll have a couple of updates at the end to just cover any other items that are not specifically in our memo.
Good morning. The District Budget has undergone significant changes in the past year and a half. These have been implemented with the Board's guidance to help ensure the District can more easily track and manage all of the variant grants and other revenue sources. And there are multiple requirements. As such, the District has split the budget into an operating budget and a grants budget. The operating budget is the active budget unit for daily operations, including permits and other sources of revenue. The grants budget includes motor vehicle fees. There are two separate line items for motor vehicle fees, emissions inventory, community air monitoring, equipment cash prescribed- air monitoring, equipment cache, prescribed fire, particulate matter, wood smoke reduction, farmer and car moyer grants. Each of these programs has specific program requirements for tracking and reporting, whether state or federal. Grants that fund the district activities or purchase assets for the district can be transferred to the operating budget as work is being completed or purchase is made, and I'll get into some details on what that means and how we were able to balance our budget. The operating budget for the district is currently balanced. Although the district is using funds considered one-time funding in order to balance, this is achieved by utilizing administrative funds from grants as well as motor vehicle fees. The district's working with consultants to recommend and updates for our fee schedule. Once we have the recommendations from the consultants, we'll bring that to this board for consideration. The purpose of that is to have a more sustainable balanced budget without having to use one-time fees. The one-time funds are coming from the motor vehicle fees, and they're utilized to balance our budget. They can be refunded in the future years without penalty should it be necessary for the fee schedule, or once the fee schedule has been updated. The district's operating budget request is for $1,307,691.43. The significant changes in specific expenditure categories results from improved tracking expenses. On the revenue side, with grants and motor vehicle fees going directly to grant budget units, these now show as operating transfers that come into the operating budget. The details I can share with you here in a minute. If you refer to our MCA QMD 0327, it shows the $1,307 I was referring to. If you see our expenses, they're a little bit more than that in terms of coming out at a balanced budget. And then if you see our other budget, which was all of the grants, YA MV 2766, those are the motor vehicle fees monies that we're using to come out just even, although these fees are not guaranteed, and we don't know how much we're going to get from year to year, or if we're going to get them. It's not certain. So we're in an okay position now, though we need to create some fee schedule and structural changes to be able to ensure the success of the district. Any questions?
Yes, Supervisor Jordy.
You could just give us an update, since we are sitting at the Air District Board, about your new location. Has it been identified? Have you moved there? What's going on?
Happy to provide an update. We have a fully executed contract at 1100 Hastings, Suite A. It is in the same building as the current K Wine radio station. We are exchanging keys and deposits sometime this week, so we'll be able to begin the move process, though we need to send out a press release to announce that we'll be closing and have limited services for in-person services, since we'll need to pack and get moving shortly. And we're working with GSA and IT to get those transitions happen as soon as possible.
Thank you, Supervisor Jordy. Any other questions? Supervisor McGordy?
First of all, gentlemen, thank you very much for pulling together a good program. You know, we're starting to go, Supervisor Jordy and I ad hoc a couple of years ago, our department was kind of in disarray, or I should say, our district. And with the turnover of staff and put onto the direction of Doug and Ephraim onboard, things are looking much, much better. My comment to you is, your budget document is kind of unorthodox, and I would kind of encourage you to maybe take a look at some other formats. AFCO uses a really good one. It's difficult to track what's going on here, so it'd be something I would recommend for improvement. And maybe periodically sharing with us what's going on financially with the district through the consent calendar or something like that. That would really help a lot to better understand what you're doing. And then anecdotally, I've heard from members of the public that Carl Moyer program is working really, really well, and they appreciate Ephraim jumping on it and taking care of it, because they'd been sort of sitting and languishing, and he got things moving, got people their checks, and, you know, I noticed that. And thank you very much, because a lot of those people are my clientele constituents. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hasek?
Yeah, I'm trying.
I appreciate the balanced budget, but using this one-time only, is it $121,000, the one-time only, that is balancing the budget? Or is it, you mentioned that it was coming from the Carl Moyer funds, and that's...
It's not coming from the Carl Moyer funds. It's coming from, so each one of these grants, we get somewhere between 6% and 12% of that monies that we can use for staff time, and that's how some of our staff time is covered. But the money for operational transfers coming specifically from motor vehicle 2766, which is money that the DMV collects from when people in our county pay for their registration for their automotive vehicles. About three of those dollars, or I think it's between 3 and 6, they collect and then send over to the district to help with ozone monitoring or whatever the district may need. Typically, we'd want to make projects for the community with that, but we can use it in an emergency for operating the district, which is what we're using now.
That is the $177,000 comes from motor vehicle funds. And the motor vehicle funds can be used, this is a legitimate use for them. We would much rather see them go to public benefit projects, but we can use them for this. So it's one of those things where we don't want to see it. We call it one-time funds because we don't want to use them this way. We want to use them for projects because they're not a guaranteed thing, and we would like to see that more of a public benefit, a direct public benefit from these funds.
Okay. So really, they're not one-time only because we get that money every year?
We get money for motor vehicles every year, but sometimes DMV gives it to us every month. Sometimes it's, you'll get a check at six months, so the funding can vary quite a bit. Eventually, we will get funds, but it all depends on who registers and how many registered vehicles there are, and if they're paid on time, and if DMV or the state, the state can hold those funds and use those funds and then reimburse us five years later, you know, with the budget crisis issues. So there's lots of things that are in flux with those funds. So it is subject to the state, you know, other issues.
Thank you.
Final comment for me, addressing some of our unorthodox tracking cycles or tracking documents, that's because they really truly are. We're a special district, and therefore it'll look a little bit different than other departments, because we have guidelines for each one of our grants that are tracked for the state, for example, with those guidelines, and then we have federal ones that are tracked with those guidelines. And then we try to cohesively get it into one format to work for the county, as it's with our treasuries, with the county. So using munis, we want to try to clean those up a little bit, and that's the process that we're in now, from having a very confusing tracking sheet to something that's a little bit more easy to follow, and then we'll continue to improve that so it can be, at a glance, easier to understand.
Thank you for that. I know that all of our departments have been working to improve the way that we track, and I certainly appreciate the work that both of you have done to do outreach within the community, to make sure that our community's needs are being met with our Moyer grant, with smoke management plans, et cetera. It's been great to see you work with community engagement and participate in important conversations that can sometimes be a bit challenging. So really grateful for that and look forward to ongoing conversations regarding those issues. I'd like to go to public comment. Supervisor McGordy, did you have a question or comment?
So the other question I have, and I think Supervisor Williams and I have discussed this a lot, is one burn permit that notifies both the fire agencies and the Air Quality Management District. Is that something that we've looked at? Is it feasible? Is it not feasible? Is it just aspirational at this point?
That was one of the updates I was going to come back to, but we hadn't gotten to yet, is we are in meetings with CAL FIRE and fire agencies and a couple of board members.
Yeah, I guess my concern is we're in meetings with two supervisors, so if you all are communicating as well, that's not great, because you have Supervisor Mulhern and Supervisor Williams working on that. Go ahead and provide the update, please.
Yeah. So the update is, we're in discussions with that process right now, and we are looking at the, what options are available to improve the permitting and cohesiveness of the permitting program. There are, you know, of course, there are hiccups with, you know, different fire agencies have different requirements, and their rules are different from place to place, depending on if you're CAL FIRE or local. And so trying to come together with something that works for everybody, and it may not be one permit, but we think, at the very least, we think we can get to a point where you can go to one site and get every permit that you need so that you log in for your property, and it will get you everything that you need for that property. So we're trying to, at the very least, that'll be our first step, and then we can continue to work towards something that's improved. So that's kind of where we're at at the moment.
Yeah, madam chair, don't panic. This is in years past. We've discussed this not at this point in time.
I do have public comment. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I was going to say the same. I think these are different discussions over a different year.
CEO?
But I wanted to note, I have seen Air Quality District work with the fire agencies like it's never happened before. I'm only hearing positive. It's probably a more appropriate time to discuss it, since this is a budget item, but it's worth noting that there's something working really well right now. I want to thank the leadership.
Thank you. CEO, Angela?
I, too, would like to thank Doug for all the time that he's put in and his mentorship with Ephraim. Ephraim's doing a wonderful job as well. Doug, thank you. Thank you, Ephraim. And I would also, Ephraim has been putting in reports into the CEO report on a regular monthly basis. So they are providing information. They've had grants available for folks that he's putting in there as well. So he is reporting out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. If you're in the room and wish to speak on this item, please go ahead and come forward. It's item 4C, and if you're online, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine on your phone. And first, I have Devin Boer.
Good morning, Board and staff at Air Quality District. I appreciate the update this morning, and I want to echo, you know, thanks to Doug and Ephraim both for their communication with Farm Bureau and the programs we are specifically interested in. Those tend to be, you know, car moyer, the farmer program, specific grant fundings coming from the state that do assist our local farming and ranching community with equipment replacement. Just some question and clarification perhaps for staff in terms of looking at the farmer budget. It was unclear to me if there were funds, I wasn't sure if there was allowable rollover from year to year. I thought that was sort of a use it or lose it sort of mentality. So there may be clarification on that in terms of if there's funds being brought forward from a previous fiscal year. And also clarification, I guess, on what the assumed allocation is going forward for fiscal year 2425 for the farmer program. I'm looking at, I believe, $75,000, but that's a year-end projection, and the total budget is quite a bit more. So I'm just requesting sort of what that anticipated allocation might be for the farmer funds for 2425, and when you anticipate that application program being opened. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions.
Thank you, Devin. I heard three questions in there, so if I miss one, let me know. Currently, we're trying to get out year four, which was a supplemental application pool, which was done by Placer County. And to answer your question on if we can roll over grant dollars for that, the answer is yes. So let's say we don't use some of that money in one year. We have, they go about a five-year period, although for that year, year four, those have to be spent this year, and we're on a timeline, which we have a stack of about six contracts ready to sign for farmer on my desk right now. And I've been trying to get in contact with the applicants so we can get that done. And then farmer year five money, those applications are under review, and we should be able to get them funded, though I think it's uncertain at this point whether or not we'll be able to have farmer continued because of the state current budget situation. We can't project what amount of money will be coming in for future years. So it's kind of what we have now that we're going to try to get out.
And we did project $879,000 for revenue for fiscal year 2425. So as a, basically, that's a holder. That was kind of the maximum we anticipate we could receive, and that's just saying we think we might receive this, but it'll come to the board once we have any idea of what we're going to get, and then we can do the budget adjustment to actually put it into the budget and have it prepared at that point.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment or have questions? Otherwise, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Hasek?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, and I'd like to vote by the button. Oh, I would also like to say the public hearing is closed, and then vote by the button.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to announce that the directors will now recess as the Mendocino County Air Quality Management District and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and we will take a 15-minute break and be back at 10:40 to hear item 4D, a notice public hearing regarding proposed budget for fiscal year 2425. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was going to have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently. We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them. I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her, and everything I do, I do it for her. And everything I do, I do it for her. I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive. You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Nett has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you, you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. And I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child and her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit mendoready.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're going to do, what you're going to take with you, how you're going to communicate, where you're going to go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, mendoready.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit mendoready.org today, where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, mendoready.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Well, I was a new mom, and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
I thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and being, everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first-time mom. I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with, with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating, and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes depth, and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like, even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. And the fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia, siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado, como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí. Y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber cómo, qué actividad hacer con más.
We are on item 4D, a noticed public hearing. Discussion and possible action, including approval of the Mendocino County proposed budget for fiscal year 2425, including all recommended actions and adjustments and possible continuation to June 5, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. if necessary. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established, and all correspondence has been sent to your emails.
Thank you very much. We will start with the staff presentation. CEO Antle?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you today is a balanced budget for fiscal year 2425. This budget has been developed in front of this board, beginning with the budget ad hoc attending the April budget conferences being held between the auditor controller, fiscal team, and each department going through their expenses and revenues. Three budget workshops have been held in public in front of this board. A couple of challenges have been impacted this development. State budget deficit, flat revenues, and this board's goal to support their most valuable resource by approving market wage increases with a $9 million impact over three years. Credit for this budget to where it is today belongs to the working relationship between the auditor controller, the executive office, the budget team, department heads, and elected officials. Their fiscal folks have been working collaboratively and creatively within their mandates and core service. Much like this current year, the work to structurally correct this budget will continue as soon as it is passed. At this point, I'll turn it over to Deputy CEO Tony Rags.
Good morning, Chair Mulhern, members of the board, Tony Rags, Deputy CEO. Thank you for this opportunity to present the CEO proposed budget for fiscal year 2024-25. We will begin with several updates from departments, and then after that, we will move on to the rest of the budget presentation. I would request that during the department updates, that there be an opportunity for questions for those departments in between each of their updates. And then when we get to the budget presentation, to hold questions until the end. So with that, we'd like to move on to the next slide, and we can start with our probation department with Chief Probation Officer Eisenlokal Telly.
Yeah, good morning, Chair, board members, county staff. Eisenlokal Telly, Chief Probation Officer. I'll just briefly give you a quick rundown of the budget process from the probation department's perspective. You're aware that we run Juvenile Hall, which is under budget 2550. I'll start there because it's the most simplistic of the budgets that I manage. So our budget request for, from the general fund was the $2,778,700, with about 33% of that being covered by revenues. Last year, our request was $2,376,442. So the largest variant between the two years is that this year, we had an increase by $491,000 in staffing costs. The CEO adjustment that's on your sheets reduces our net county cost by $172,000 to bring it down to a total of just, just over $2.6 million. Or another way to say that is 65% of the Juvenile Hall expenditures is covered by general fund. We'll continue to do our best to look for opportunities to bring down general fund contributions. When I became chief, and this is my seventh budget now with the county, we were close to 100% contribution to Juvenile Hall from the general fund. So you can see there's been a 35%-ish reduction from general fund by looking at other ways to bring in revenues that are not fee-based. As you know, California changed its laws and fees can't be placed on parents or kids that are using the services of the county's Juvenile Hall. So I also want to draw your attention, when you look at all the completed projects from '23, '24, when in your packets, you'll see that no general fund dollars were used in any of the completed projects at the Juvenile Hall. And that also looks forward-facing for '24, '25. All the projects, which are security-related, infrastructure-related, are being covered by revenues outside of the general fund. I also believe with CAL AM coming online, there's a strategic opportunity to partner with the county's behavioral health and public health systems under Medi-Cal billing model that'll see a further cost savings to the general fund for the county. I anticipate anywhere from 2% to 3% of our total net county cost being saved year in through that model. So that's the Juvenile Hall's budget. It is a sustainable budget at this point, and that also takes into consideration the SB 823 mandates. You'll all remember me discussing the closure of Department of Juvenile Justice, and all youth have to be kept at the county level now up until potentially their 25th birthdays. Probation is a much more complicated animal than Juvenile Hall is. You'll know that we run both the juvenile and adult probation departments. We have both field services and court services, and we also now run a pre-trial release program. Our offices are in Yukai, Fort Bragg, and Willets. Our budget request was the $2,577,000, with about 68% of our expenditures being covered by things other than the general fund. Last year, our budget was $1,706,000 from net county cost. Again, the largest variant from this year to last year's net county costs is our staffing increased by $717,000. And just to be clear, both of those numbers are not adding any additional staff. Those are for status quo budgets. The CEO adjustment reduced the net county cost by $234,000. And so what that does is brings the total contribution from the county down to just under 30% for the expenditures in the probation department's budget. down to just under 30% for the expenditures in the probation department's budget. Also under probation, you'll see the projects again were completed with no general fund contributions. All of these were revenues or grants, both for fiscal year 2324 and forward-facing. The one thing that I really like to highlight here is it's the death by a thousand cuts for probation. That's the analogy that I use with loss of revenues. The revenues this year are particularly difficult, not just for the county, which I just mentioned to you, you're 30% of our budget contribution, but it's the state dollars. You know what the governor's May revise does and I'll just not tell you what the state numbers are because they're so inflated. I'll tell you what the county-specific cuts are. So for us, I mentioned to you, if the CEO's recommendation is an elimination of $234,000 from my ask, that's roughly 2.5% of the net county cost. So the CCP, Community Corrections Partnership, the governor is sweeping $100,000 from Mendocino County. That went specifically to probation. Then we have the PRCS, the Post Release Community Supervision. Those are the people that go to state prison. They're sweeping $40,000 to Mendocino County from that pot of funding. Prop 172 is a $45,000 reduction to the probation department this year, which is on top of a $50,000 cut from last year. So two years cumulative is $95,000. And lastly, the one that I believe still has some play in it and we are still fighting this is SB 678. My last year's numbers was $592,000. If the governor and the assemblies plan goes forward, that'll be a 67% reduction to Mendocino County for $392,000 specifically to probation. The Senate, I met with Senator McGuire and his staff three separate times in the last three months. They've put a package together to the governor and the assembly that would try to smooth out the 678. They're trying to revert it back to a pre-pandemic formula that is a major hit into rural counties specifically Mendocino. If the state were to just apply a proportional cut of the 8% that that pot of funding is going to get, then our cut would only be about $40,000. And some counties under the pre-pandemic formula are what you would consider as a winner because you're going to make money and some were considered losers like a 67% reduction. Smoothing out of the formula is a better model for the industry of probation because I can plan. Major cuts, you can't plan for those unless you have major rainy day reserve funds for them. So we've kept those somewhat. I'm able to maintain my level of services for one year under 678 and after that, if this cut were to go forward, we'd be looking at a reduction in services. So this is why the net county cost, like I've always told the board and everybody when I teach budget workshops to new chiefs, it's like the Jenga tower and this is a major block that's being pulled. You can't pull continuously from the bottom of the tower without the tower collapsing. So I believe that in some nation, I'm optimistic in the probation department's fiscal conservativeness and its ability to operate extremely lean. It's feasible that we could hit the targeted structural deficit that's being built into our budget without needing adjustments. But if necessary, like before, I would be coming to the board around mid-year or third quarter asking for adjustments. We worked collaboratively with the executive office to come up with these numbers and I think we're going to be able to meet our public safety mandates and I'll be able to keep the board properly informed of any changes that might come through because of this. Also, if we get any of those wins from the state, then I would be informing the executive office and that won't create such a large deficit in our budgets going forward. That's a quick nutshell of probation and juvenile halls outlook for 2425.
Thank you Supervisor Williams, Supervisor Hachak and myself.
Chief, could you give us optimistic pessimistic range of when you come back third quarter? What might you ask for?
I am hopefully optimistic that I will ask for nothing.
Okay, and on the other end?
On the other end, I put in the numbers that are being cut. Those would be the high ends of what would be requested. So about 234 in probation and 172 at the hall. But like last year, I was optimistic and I requested the 250. We ended up coming forward and saying we need zero. I'm optimistic that I won't need to come back, but if I do, I just don't want to be put on a list that says I ran over budget. It's a structural deficit. I'm not running over budget.
Supervisor Hachak.
Well, I appreciate your efforts in Juvenile Hall of collaborating with other counties, bringing in Lake County, the contract with them and other counties to kind of bring in some resources to our counties. Thank you.
And on June 25th, you'll have on consent calendar a collaboration between Siskiyou County and Mendocino for bed day rate as well.
Okay, very good.
Thank you Supervisor Jardine.
Yeah, so beneath the county departments have fees for service and you've referenced, maybe you could go just a little more detail. What were the fees for service that the probation or juvenile hall had in the past? And then what was it changed in state law that eliminated?
All the fees in probation have been eliminated by the state, both on the juvenile side and the adult side. So adult was really, if we wrote a report, we used to be able to charge for that time. PSIs are mandates by the county to write for the court. It's a sentencing document, anywhere from 15 to 18 pages long, eight to 12 hours of work per report. No longer able to charge for that. Supervision fees, every month the defendant used to have to pay to be on supervision, to be monitored by the probation department, stricken. Drug testing fees, stricken. The state then came up with some type of formula that's coming to the counties, but again, it's at like about 60 cents to the dollar. They did a full look at the costs and in urban counties, it's much different than in rural counties. The costs, they have more staff, we have less staff. Economies of scale come into play here. We're projecting that deficit was, like I said, about 40% of what the revenue used to come in. Juvenile Hall, the same thing. You used to be able to charge for the supervision of juveniles, the testing of juveniles and even their stay in the hall. So there was a bed day rate charged to the families for having their kids being brought into Juvenile Hall, fed, clothed, housed, cared for medically, psychologically and provided schooling. All of those fees were eliminated by the state. So there are no fees that support probation departments, but there's still mandates in the penal code that you're to provide these services to the community.
Okay, and it sounded like you said that the state does a partial reimbursement for some of those services but not all of them?
So the state isn't able to look at Mendocino County versus Sonoma versus Lake. They come up with a proportional number that they're going to give to the state when they cut a fee like this. And then what the county takes back from the state is based on population, not on your actuals, which we kept actuals. We showed them what it actually was going to cost us when they take their, say, $200 million for this and then they break it down by county. We're always the small county minimum, which is not, you're comparing us to Alpine, Modock, Sierra. We have $90,000 but we choose to provide services to our community by going up to Covelo, Leightonville, Willets, Fort Bragg versus our neighbors to the south choose to have everybody report to Santa Rosa. So the costs in Mendocino County are a little higher than neighboring counties because of our rural geographical nature.
And then finally, can you clarify, is the state's partial reimbursement for all of those services that were previously funded through fees or for only some of those services?
Some are eliminated, some are all lumped together with a backfill. It just depended on which year and which bill did the elimination to which service. This is over a five-year span. I didn't bring all the SB AB numbers with me to give you a real specific answer, but that's pretty close.
Thanks.
Chief, I just want to thank you for your leadership within the county. I know you've worked hard to help with other department heads and also for your leadership throughout the state. And you've been vocal with this board about concerns of, as you said, death by a thousand cuts. And I know that our decision to increase wages has impacted your department and I just want to say I appreciate that you've taken that in stride. I think that was really important for this board to increase wages and you made it clear that it was going to be challenging for you and I just want to give you appreciation for accepting that and helping us move forward with that.
I absolutely appreciate the raises that are given to staff. Morale is really important. Their wages are important to them and to us. But it isn't at the cost of losing staff either, so trying to become efficient across the county, working on increasing revenues to the county and right sizing the county are all three really important conversations that we need to have throughout the day.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely important ongoing conversations. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Deputy CEO Rakes, did you want to introduce the next department?
I'd like to welcome up to the podium Planning and Building Services Director Julia Krog.
Good morning Supervisors, Julia Krog, Planning and Building Services Director. If we could go to the next slide. I'm going to talk a little bit today about some of the accomplishments over this last fiscal year and then also the goals and priorities for this upcoming fiscal year. So the department initiated this last year really improving our processes and focusing on efficiency as well as the customer experience. Included with this is the creation of a desk manual for each of our divisions and also records management best practices. In addition, we have been publishing comprehensive metrics on a monthly basis on our website, which will really demonstrate over the coming months and years any successes and also opportunities for improvement as they'll be reflected in those metrics on a monthly basis. We continue to focus on cost recovery and our reduction of reliance on the general fund and that's an ongoing activity and will be continuing in perpetuity. We fully implemented this last year, the Solar App Plus Grant, which resulted in automated plan check and permit issuance for eligible solar installations. So now there is no longer an office visit required and you can do it all virtually through the Solar App Plus Grant. We continue to work on the LCP update, the Local Coastal Program update, and we have executed contracts with several firms where we are conducting technical studies for the full update of that plan. We are nearly complete with our inland zoning code update and we forecast adoption of that in this upcoming year. In September is our target at this time. We continue to work on our digitization of records and also to reduce our storage needs and improve efficiency. In December, the board adopted updated priorities for our code enforcement division. We've continued to conduct enforcement based upon those adopted priorities. And then finally, we were successful this year in renewing the abandoned vehicle abatement program as part of the March 2024 election with a 91% approval rating. So we were very excited about that. Next slide please. Now to talk about some of our goals and priorities for this upcoming fiscal year. So the department will continue to focus on our core services, including the processing of building permits and discretionary permits, as well as conducting our code enforcement operations consistent with the adopted board priorities. We will also continue to focus on improvement and enhancement of our processes and customer service, including with that increasing our cost recovery and reducing our reliance on the general fund. The zoning code, as I previously noted, is forecasted to be completed with adoption hearings in September. So that's why you see that carried over onto this slide. In addition, we will continue with our LCP update grant work, which will be a continuous priority from now through 2026, which is the date at which time we plan to submit for coastal commission certification, December 31st, 2026. We will also be updating this next year the surface mining and reclamation ordinance, which is really to bring it into consistency with required state law updates. So this is one where we're trying to get in front of the mandate and get it done sooner. In addition, as was discussed in January of 2024 when the department was in front of this board regarding our priorities, motions and directives, we will be continuing work on the inland short-term rental ordinance, which was deferred with the agreement of the board at that January 2024 meeting. And we will be initiating work on the Redwood Valley Municipal Advisory Council's Community Action Plan and Design Guidelines. We have just set up a meeting with them for in July to sort of have a kickoff conversation regarding that update process. And then finally, we continue to scan and reduce our storage needs while also improving our availability of records. And that's going to be a continuous project for us, ultimately hoping that we move to a completely digital process where we are no longer storing paper files. So we're excited about those improvements as well. And that really concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have of me.
Supervisor Williams, Supervisor Hachak and Supervisor Jardine.
Two questions. I'm happy to see the scanning move forward. Would you say the office is going paperless or are there more steps to get there?
We are in the process of doing so. So there are definitely more steps to get there, but we have a really great team that's really focusing on this. We're moving next to digital signatures. We are ordering a large format scanner so that way we can scan all the building permit applications when they come in and then return the paper copies back to the public. And then at some point, we may reach a point where we actually move to saying public shall submit digitally to us and no longer accept paper.
Right. And second question. Throughout the year, this board generates requests that often fall on planning and building and some amount on council. And often the answer is back to the board is you don't have the money to do this. There's a cost. And it's the responsible thing for the department to do because you don't have the funds for it. What would you say on average would be needed for us to set aside so that when those requests come, there is money allocated? And this is, you know, comes from the public and the public is asking for better services and improved quality of life and it filters to the board and then it filters down to you. And at some point, we have to say, no, we don't have any money in our budget for it. I'm not going to hold you to it, but what would be a ballpark guess average that we ask for per year that we can't, requests that we can't fulfill because we don't have underlying budget?
Gosh, well that, because the requests vary so very greatly. I think you're looking anywhere between $10,000 per request in terms of staff time and I'm really ballparking here, so please do not hold this to me in the future. Up to, you know, $30,000, $40,000, really depending on what that request is and what staff members have to be involved in addressing that request.
That's helpful. So maybe for the board, do we want to set aside some budget? Not for unlimited projects and not for projects of unlimited scope, but some of the routine requests we make throughout the year. You know, I brought one up, let's delete a paragraph so that we can not require business licenses in some case. And we found we don't have the funds to do that. That would improve the quality of life for small business in the county. I know Supervisor Magorty has brought up water and Supervisor Hachak had an item we said we couldn't afford just in the last year. Do we want to have some budget for board improvements that hit council and planning and building services?
If I may.
Director Krog.
Yeah, if I may, I think actually my suggestion would be that you handle those more on an individualized basis and talk about whether or not a budget adjustment is necessary when an item comes up for discussion. And my suggestion would be to really work closely with our office so we can ballpark what that amount may be. And that way the board can have a very informed discussion about what kind of commitment you may be making.
Yeah, the problem I've seen is this budget will allocate every dollar. There won't be any left. And so the rest of the year, we're in a position where we can't do much. We don't have any, we don't have any funds to even talk about what we would want to do. And so I think this annual budget cycle is the opportunity to reserve a little bit of money for board projects throughout the year. And, you know, I don't know what those projects would be and I imagine the five of us would fight about it. But at least we would have some money to work with to improve Mendocino County. I think the public expects this out of us. And it's not really fair to staff to, on the spot, bring these up throughout the year where they have no budget to assist.
I think that's what Director Krog was pointing to and I think we have had that conversation at recent budget or recent items related to, do we want to make this a priority? So I definitely appreciate that we all have individual needs from within our constituencies and when things come up, there might be a better opportunity to address it specifically rather than ballparking a number. But since I do have three other pens up, what I'd like to do is have you all ask your questions and if you want to provide feedback to Supervisor Williams, that would be a great time. And I believe I had Hachak, Jardine, Magorty.
Well, just in response to that issue is that right now it looks like we have a balanced budget. So if we put any more in expectation that there's going to be issues that come down the line, then we got to find those, that money right now. So I would hope that we could deal with each issue as they come on and we say, hey, is that a priority and where do we find the money for it when it happens? Right? Because otherwise, we're just, we're going to have to find the money now. We don't have it and we don't even have a project to say this is what we need it for. for." But with the, with the presentation, you talked about the Surface Mining Ordinance Update. And when we were looking at water issues, that we saw that water extraction for commercial purposes was part of the Surface Mining Ordinance, I believe?
We compared, we had classified that use as similar to mining and processing, which is allowable in all zoning districts with a major use permit. However, the ordinance that I'm referring to is in Title 22 of County Code, which is more individualized procedures for surface mines such as gravel extraction facilities, things like that, and would not be what water extraction would be subject to. It's really more focused on aggregate resources and mineral resources.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Jertie.
Yeah, so first, just trying to respond to the issue raised by Supervisor Williams. I don't know if this is the case, but I know many of the cities will have what they call a general fund, or a general plan and/or land use maintenance fee. And do we have such a fee?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is that fee adequate?
It is continually adjusted, and it was recently adjusted as part of the fee updates, and it is regularly looked at to make sure that it is adequate to fund for either ordinance updates or related general plan comprehensive update.
Because if that revenue source was sufficient, and maybe there's just not enough permits being issued, you know, being requested and paid for, but if the revenue was sufficient, then I think some of the proposals for zoning changes that the Board may initiate, there would be the funds to pay for it. So I guess I'm a little unclear, how do we know if it's sufficient if we're hearing there's not enough money?
Sure. I will say at the current utilization rate, it is sufficient. If that fund starts being utilized in greater capacity, then there likely would be an additional adjustment made to that, and we do that on an annual basis. So really, that fund has been building, and it's been building over many, many years for funding the comprehensive general plan update, which, as you can imagine, is a several million dollar endeavor. And that, the idea is to build that fund over the 20 years, so that way we can fund it in-house. We have been able to pull from that, and this Board can provide direction to pull from that fund, acknowledging that as we pull from it, we may be reducing what is available in there for the comprehensive update, so.
And then, when planning in the coastal zone, we have a grant opportunity through the Coastal Commission, which the county is receiving a grant. I don't know, but I'm just curious, are there other grants from Office of Planning and Research or other state agencies that would pay for zoning code updates or general plan updates that are inland, not in the coastal zone?
Yes, we do track on those. So the inland zoning code update is a LEAP grant-funded, local early action planning grant fund, and we're working closely with HCD on that. So we are tracking grants that may be available for us to utilize for things like ordinance updates in the inland area. We do have the Coastal Commission grants, as you mentioned. However, I understand that those funds have been somewhat frozen for additional requests to go in, so.
Okay. And then the question I was going to ask before that was, in the highlights of the Department accomplishments, talked about the Planning and Building Department has a desk manual, and I'm just curious, is the desk manual similar to, but maybe more comprehensive than the, what have been referred to as Department memos, where there were instructions to staff that when you get a situation like this, this is how you approach it because the code may not go into that level of detail?
Yes, correct. So, and again, we are, we initiated work on this, so it's not fully complete yet. But these are going to include, one, workflows, so process, how a staff member, so you're a new staff member that comes in, step-by-step guide on how to process a permit or whatever that action may be that you're taking. And then in addition, we will have a separate policies and procedures. So all those staff memos really converted into a very clear packet that is regularly maintained. So any new staff coming onboard is going to have access to all of those Department memos and any decisions that have been made, and as they're updated over time, making sure those are updated as well. These will be digital, so that way also we're not running into the, you know, somebody has a piece of paper slipped in there and making sure that we have a comprehensive and available desk manual to all staff.
I personally feel like that's a major accomplishment because, I mean, that's, that's one of the things that hear from constituents, it's not always true, but, you know, oftentimes you'll hear, "Oh, if you talk to one staff member, you get one answer; you talk to someone else, you get a different answer." And I think the intent of those staff memos, and it sounds like the PBS desk manual, is to kind of create more consistency from one employee to the other. That won't prevent a member of the public from hearing something different from just be the way it gets relayed. But I appreciate hearing that that, the work in progress and well underway.
Yes.
Supervisor McGordy.
I have two questions. So what I hear Supervisor Williams discussing is the idea of a contingency fee, basically, that allows us to have some flexibility as things come up. And I'm hearing from you, there sort of is that already. So perhaps we can compare notes a little better and clarify that so that when, you can tell us, these are the things that we could change, that we actually have some money for, versus the idea that we better build into budget now or in the future, the ability to work on projects that come up that have some level of urgency, such as our hip camp work, which you were able to blend into the inland zoning update, and those sorts of opportunities as they come along?
Absolutely, and so it's just important to note that that general plan maintenance fund that we were referring to, there are some guardrails around what that fund can be utilized for. So just knowing that there's been a variety of requests from this Board in the past, not all of those requests would fit nicely underneath being able to utilize that fund for it. So that's why I think they're talking about individualized project. As those arise, we can talk about what funds are available. And often you have seen in the fiscal section of any items that the department has brought forward, that we do reference, that the Board could direct that we utilize those funds in moving forward with that project.
And then I have a second question, and that's in regards to short-term rental ordinance for interior Mendocino County. And of course, I know we discussed it, but I'm forgetting what we decided and how we decided we're going to do that. So just give me a thumbnail sketch.
Absolutely. So I think what we really heard from the Board when we were in front of you last year was that there really needed to be sort of a more variety of the permitting levels required, and really based upon the potential impact to neighbors, to resources, based upon that. So what I think we were looking at is a very tiered approach, rather than right now it's, you know, business license if you're on a county-maintained road, major use permit if you're not. And so trying to find a little bit more, I guess I would say, kind of compatibility between all of those, and trying to align those permit types with really the expected level of impact that could occur. And, you know, also looking at that a major use permit may not be that appropriate level, and perhaps it's something more along the lines of an administrative permit. We also really understood that there was a desire to make sure that there was, you know, ability to address community complaints or neighborhood complaints and what that process may look like. So we have looked at neighboring models as well.
Okay, thank you, it all comes back.
Supervisor Hachak.
I just wanted to comment that I did hear from a contractor who went in to get a permit and thought it was going to take a week or two, that's what the word on the street would be, and he went in and got it in 10 minutes. So thank you. I think something's happening with the efficiencies, and that kind of client response, very positive.
Thank you, that's always wonderful to hear.
Thank you, I'm not seeing any additional questions from the Board, so thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Deputy CEO Rakes.
Thank you. We'll move on next to our Office of Emergency Services. I'd like to welcome up to the podium Jeff Adair and Travis Kilmer.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, CEO Antle, County Council Ross. I'm Jeff Adair, Emergency Services Coordinator, County OES. During this past fiscal year, we've been fortunate enough to not need to activate the Emergency Operations Center, EOC, for a disaster or emergency. But in an effort to stay sharp and prepared, we called our section chiefs in without their prior knowledge in October for a simulated earthquake scenario. And so they called in the staff that they thought were necessary to accomplish the goals of facilitating that EOC activation, and we kind of tested the system at that time. We also conducted tsunami communications exercise in March. That's kind of an annual thing, but this year we went regional with it and collaborated with Delnort County and Humboldt County as well. We recognized the need and created, developed some EOC section-specific trainings. And so we just targeted smaller groups within the EOC and provided some specific trainings for those. And finance, logistics, and planning trainings have already been delivered. The management training will be delivered one week from today. OES manages several grants. The first two you see on the screen there are kind of annual grants and just with little tweaks annually. But I just wanted to highlight the CAL FIRE grants at the bottom, which are not quite as repetitive. And the first one was for evacuation software purchase. So we acquired and implemented Genesis Evac, which is our mappings, mapping software for county, and it's found on MendoReady.org. And through that grant, we also received advertising dollars, so that's the bus ads that you see running around our county, encouraging people to sign up for alert and warnings. The other CAL FIRE grant that OES manages is high-frequency radio equipment. So Greg Glavitch and his crew purchased and did the training for some high-frequency radio equipment, and that's been implemented as well. And I'll turn it over to Travis now.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, CEO Antle, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Room County Council Ross. In addition to the grants and the training that Jeff just went over, we wanted to highlight some of the coordination activities and the outreach that OES does. So County OES is the primary agency that coordinates response to emergencies and disasters in the Mendocino County operational area. So as part of that, we hold two annual meetings, one before fire season and one before the winter storm season, where we bring together our partners. And so those are pretty large meetings typically. We would invite relevant county departments, our city partners, state agencies, public utilities, law and fire agencies, National Weather Service typically. And so those meetings just give us an opportunity to all get on the same page, make sure that there's any new capabilities that we weren't aware of, now we'll know what resources are available or what unmet needs might be out there. And then in addition to those annual meetings, OES also would call, would call meetings as needed during any time of the year. If we know that there's, you know, maybe a red flag warning or imminent winter weather, and we would organize a lot of those same partners and just make sure that we're coordinating together for a better response. In addition to that, OES regularly attends the meetings at the County VoAD, Fire Chiefs So we're constantly in coordination with our partners just to make sure the county's as ready as we can be. And then in addition to that, in terms of outreach, there's a few events that County OES regularly attends, so the Redwood Empire Fair, the Leightonville Resource Fair, and the Ukiah Pumpkin Fest. And so we table at those events, and we help make sure that people are signed up for alert and warning, that they're aware of MendoReady.org and all the resources they can find on that website, and just generally out to meet the public and make sure that people are aware of what resources are available out there. In addition to that, if requested, we make ourselves available for other community preparedness groups. The last year, we went to events with POMCH Preparedness Group and the Sherwood Firewise Community, or Communities, as well as local fire safe councils, municipal advisory councils. We can be available for any of those if they need us. And the last thing that I wanted to talk about was just the series of Prepare California meetings that County OES hosted around the county in the last year. We use that as a way to get community input on needs and projects people were looking for in communities all across the county, and then we've created a list, and we work with the grants team to try and find funding to sort of work towards closing gaps and things. That's all I have, but we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I have Supervisor McGordy and Supervisor Jertie.
Just a comment, all the times that I've worked with you guys, it's been great, always follow-up. You get back to me promptly, and I really appreciate the effort that you do. We do see things as an emergency. I'm curious about, you said that you've maintained a list on the various communities throughout the county, and I just wondered if that list is public. It'd be great to share it with the community to double-check with them. And I know, for instance, fire is a big issue in most communities, but in the First District, flooding is, particularly in Hopland. And it's something that I think we need to understand is that there are certain unique issues that show up in some communities as hazards that aren't across the board in Mendocino County. I'm curious whether you've shared back with the communities kind of the notes from what you found from your listening sessions?
So as of now, it's not public. I don't think there's a reason why we couldn't make it public. What we were kind of looking at from all the different meetings was trying to find common needs first, so if we could go out for grants, we could be addressing multiple communities' needs. But definitely some of the area-specific things like flooding, you know, we have been looking at flooding more because we know that that is an issue in county.
Yeah, so I think, it seems like kind of early warning could be useful there, because I know when we had some floods this winter, Sheriff Kendall was calling me up, asking me, "What's going on with water in your vineyard? Is it up over the bank yet or what?" So, you know, there seems like there could be kind of a network of monitored areas, certainly looking at the Hopland Gage floods, and being sure that if we, we think there's going to be a major event to get people ready to go.
I think Jeff Adair's got some stuff to add on.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I think that's one of the good things that came out of those Prepare California meetings, specifically the Hopland meeting, was we've been on the lookout for flood grant funding, and we have submitted a grant through the Department of Water Resources. I think Kelly's going to talk more about that during grants, but just to be a little more prepared in our county, that's one of the good things that came out of one of those meetings.
And remember too, that the east side of Highway 101 in Ukiah has some unique problems of being completely cut off sometimes when it floods. We can have water go across Perkins, Gobi, Talmadge, and Hopland. So it, and that creates some issues, obviously, for emergency access that you should have a plan for.
Thank you.
Yes, correct, and that's been addressed in our grant submittal. It's not been, we've not been awarded the grant yet, but both, there's four communities in the county that we've identified as maybe storage locations for some floodfight materials.
CEO Antle.
I would just like to thank Jeff and Travis and the rest of the team for all the work that they've been doing. We work very closely with the National Weather Service when times are either heat or flooding or storms coming, and Travis and Jeff are right on it to get that information to my office so we can get it published and shared on the internet. So I really appreciate the work that they're doing, the outreach that they're doing, the MAC meetings that they attend to, to share and be out there and engaging with the public. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Jertie.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could give us an update on the re-roofing grant back in May. I sent an email that I was forwarded from a constituent. Yes, back in January 2022, they had applied for the program, met all the requirements. Then in February 2023, I guess, we as the Board approved a funding agreement with FEMA, but I know there's been some issues with FEMA. So what's the status of that re-roofing grant? And the concern was that they understood that the FEMA had a deadline of November 2024 to complete the work, and maybe that's not true, but that's what they understood.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So we have gotten an extension on So we have gotten an extension on that. The new deadline is actually now December 31st of 2025. We could get another if we needed it, but hopefully that will not be necessary. I think we've pretty much ironed out the issues that we've had. And a lot of those contracts have moved forward through the process. They're not quite ready to go out to the actual homeowners for signatures yet, but a lot of them were waiting on updated roofing bids. Some of them are old enough now that they can't honor them. So it is moving forward, and I think it's very close at this point.
So the property owners that need to get a new bid, they all know that they need to get a new bid at this point?
They all received letters informing them that they should be reaching out.
And were they told that the deadline to spend the funds was now pushed back to December 2025?
That, I think at the time, we hadn't gotten the extension. No.
Because I think it might relieve some anxiety out there if people knew that, because I think I and I'm sure other supervisors are just hearing from people, they're just concerned with, you know, construction season and availability of roofing contractor.
Right.
Thank you. Can we work with the CEO to put something in the CEO's report for the 25th that would have that update in it and just an update about the program in general?
Sure.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional questions from the board. Thank you for your presentation. Deputy CEO Rix?
Thank you very much. I would like to now have Kelly Hansen from the Grants Division come up and provide the Grants Report.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Chair, Board, CEO Antle, interim County Council Ross, Kelly Hansen with the Executive Office Grants Unit. So in this fiscal year, the Grants Unit has submitted or is in the process of applying for, and this number is updated since the submittal of this slide, 12 grants totaling just over $66 million on behalf of the county. The two grants we're working on this month is the BSCC Prop 47 Grant, working with the Fort Bragg Police Department on the coastal expansion of the Crew Program, and a $100,000 PG&E Resilience Hub Grant. Notably, FEMA Cal OES has already awarded the county a little over $345,000 back in March for the required update of the Mendocino County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And as Jeff and Travis mentioned, we are expecting this month, any minute now, an award from the Department of Water Resources for a little over $280,000 for the Flood Emergency Response Grant Program. This would fund a local emergency flood program, emergency plan, updated maps, emergency communications equipment for the EOC, and placement of four flood flight containers throughout the county, which would include Leightonville, Hopland, Ukiah, and Point Arena. They'd be located strategically at our fire departments. Also during this fiscal year, the Grants Unit has managed or provided assistance in over $12 million and 21 grants in collaboration with other departments. One of the notable achievements this year was the transition of the management of CDBG grants to the Executive Office. This encompasses the oversight of three active CDBG grants, management of legacy CDBG programs and loans, and the development of applications for the CDBG NOFA. Next slide. A big achievement for this department this year was the investment of time in staff training and new grants management software. This year, we provided training to equip all county staff to handle aspects of the grant lifecycle, from application to implementation to reporting. This is important because it improves chances of securing funding, ensuring that award grant funds are used effectively and comply with regulations and managed responsibly. Adherence to these principles is crucial as it helps improve record retention and ultimately contributes to the delivery of high-quality services to our community. We also introduced a new web-based grants management software called Amplifun to streamline grants administrative tasks and ensure adherence to regulatory guidelines. Two sets of department trainings were held between December and March. While the official department trainings concluded in March, the Grants Unit and IT remain available to provide support. Staff members are encouraged to take advantage of the available training videos and learning materials to facilitate self-directed learning in the system and ensure maximum utilization of capacities. And I am available for any questions you may have for the Grants Unit.
If our members have questions, Supervisor McGordy, Supervisor Jardy?
I just want to admire the growth of this division and, you know, the good things that you're doing. It was something that I thought when I joined the Board of Supervisors, we should have as a Grants Division because most large organizations of size do. And to, obviously, avoiding things like clawback from agencies that would get grants is part of the insurance policy. I'm curious, are you able to begin to get some administrative overhead fees from the grants that you're getting that are helping to pay for the division?
Most grants do allow some administrative percentage, and we are able to, or charge weighted rates for staff time, yes.
Okay, so we're getting a income from the grants is what I hoped, that it would assist us in being able to afford a Grants Division.
It looks as though somebody from the table would like to answer.
If I may, through the Chair, Acting Auditor Controller, Treasure Tax Collector, Sarah Pierce. The grant that funded Amplifun for the purchase of the software also is funding the Grants Administration position for a few years, so it has been covered.
Great. That's good news, because we can afford this.
Thank you for that clarification. And Supervisor Jardy?
Yeah, I just want to repeat what Supervisor McGordy said. I mean, when I left the city of Fort Bragg 12 years ago, you know, that was an organization that was very aggressive getting grants and was building lots of infrastructure with those grants. And it's been a concern of mine that I haven't until recently seen that with the county in Mendocino. And so I'm grateful that it looks like with this Grants Division that the county will now aggressively seeking grants to rebuild infrastructure, that the county doesn't have the general fund dollars to pay for. And just on the issue that Supervisor McGordy raised also, I did ask a couple of questions in advance of today's meeting, CEO and fiscal team, and maybe they could go into greater detail, but I think what Supervisor McGordy is getting at is it's not uncommon for a local government agency to be collecting beyond the hard cost of administration and some, basically, some general overhead indirect costs for grant administration projects. And my understanding, and either the CEO or Sarah Pierce would answer this, I think there's a study underway right now to more fully capture those indirect costs, which, again, I think my impression is that other agencies here in Mendocino County are more aggressively charging those indirect costs than the county is right now.
If I may, through the Chair, Sarah Pierce, Acting Auditor Controller, Treasure Tax Collector. The Auditor's Office is engaged with a consultant, MGT Consulting, to look at our cost plan, our A-87. We did have a conversation on Friday, and that contract is underway, and we will be reviewing the cost plan in the next few months. So there will be something back in front of the board fairly soon.
Great, thank you. I'm not seeing any additional board questions, so thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Deputy CEO Rix?
Thank you once again. With the department updates out of the way, I think we can move on into the main portion of the budget presentation. So we'll dive right in with our next slide. So here, we have our general fund net county cost. This is our overview here that will inform the rest of the slides that we'll present today. You see here that we have the current general fund net county cost as of publication of this presentation was $86.4 million. That includes $10.4 approximately million that are represented in adjustments and deferrals to that, to the prior NCC. And we'll get into that further on Slide 6. The next item there, the non-departmental ND revenue of $79.37 million. That's the revenue that we have to work with to allocate or to appropriate to departments. This includes, this excludes one-time funds to, and also includes what we call our operating transfers out. For example, those are funding obligations such as Measure P, debt service, and roads. This is what we have left over after those funding obligations. On a later slide, you will see a chart, a historical chart, that will show another number, and I'll clarify, that doesn't include those operating transfers out, so you'll get to see the holistic view of the revenue at that time. With what we have remaining, we have $7.07 approximate million one-time funding proposed to balance the NCC. And we'll get into that here in our next slide. What we have here and what we're showing you today is a balanced budget with these considerations, with the one-time funding, department adjustments, and deferrals. We can move to the next. Here you'll recognize, you will recognize this chart from the last board workshop. This here highlights the one-time funds and what those one-time funds are broken down by. You will see that we have approximately $8 million in NCC adjustments, $7 million in one-time funding, and then that little over $2 million in deferrals that reaches us to that zero amount to balance our budget from the original $17.5 million that we were contending with at the beginning of our budget workshops. The one-time funding that we see here is made up of several different sources, including the county's retirement reserve that we have, the $3.29 million that is for, that has been set aside for changes in actuarial assumptions, that was proposed at the last board workshop or the budget workshop, changes in contract based, contract adjustments based on updated forecasting, PG&E settlement dollars at the tune of $1.2 million, mental health audit reserve of $1 million, ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan in $1.27, for a total of that $7.07 that was referenced on the prior slide, and that is what the one-time funding is made up of today to balance the budget. We'll move on to expanding the, what the NCC adjustments and the deferrals are made up. I won't read every single one of these, but to give you an idea of what we worked with, and I want to highlight here, and CEO Antle mentioned this in her introduction, regarding the NCC reductions, this wouldn't have been possible without the support of the Auditor Controller's Office staff and the departments and elected offices in working with us to come up with these numbers. So it was really a group effort with this, and we couldn't have done it without them. And I think we ended up with a better relative product as a result of it. So with that, we have the top bullet there under NCC reductions, additional requests submitted. What that is, is a reflection of the zero-based budgeting that the departments do and engage in, where they have core asks to their budget, and then they have additional asks that represent items that are important but not necessarily critical or core to their department's operations. So that $1 million that you see there is, that's what that is representing. And you see vacancies being unfunded that departments submit for that might be, you know, filling their entire position allocation table but pulling those back during the budget process. And then we have, you'll notice that there are some credits that you'll see with like department adjustments, where there was an increase there. That was working with departments and recognizing that some adjustments may have been too onerous, and we had to backfill a little bit, and that's reflected here to give you a better, a full picture of what we're looking at. And then we'll move down to the health adjustment. That's approximately $731,000. That was, that adjustment there is due to an original estimate in healthcare costs that were expected to increase in calendar year '25. We had gone forward with an estimated number. We received from HR a, an updated number, or from the health plan, a updated number that was a more accurate projection. So we were able to adjust our projections accordingly, which represents, that $731,000 represents that adjustment to the healthcare costs projected for '24, '25. And then we have our, and then water again, going down to the water, the non-departmental adjustment, that was due to some, a membership that was an obligation that got left out of the budget submission that we, that we backfilled as part of the budget process. Those amount to $8.225 million in adjustments to the department NCC. Moving on to deferrals, we have, the deferrals primarily impacted our internal service departments. So you'll see Information Services Technology Fund, we had requested or recommended to carry forward about $600,000 from the '23, '24 fiscal year, for the current fiscal year, to '24, '25. IT did some extra effort into figuring out what we had available, if we could cut or defer more funding in that service fund for '24, '25. We believe that there, IT believes that there's fund balance available to have a deferral of those enterprise costs to the tune of $1.2 million. And we have capital improvement of $257,000, and disaster recovery, $400,000, and then microwave cost allocations to county departments there as well that add up to the $2.2. Now, the combined total of those, the NCC adjustments and deferrals is $10.445 million. We'll move on to the next. Here, you'll recognize here, this is our funding ratio, our general funding ratio for bifunctional area. So these ratios represent general fund only. But here you will see that we have the two major contributors, the two major appropriations are for public protection at roughly 70%, and then general government at about 26, 26.5%. Important to note, public protection, and on Slide 10, they're further defined, it does not just include public safety. It is also planning and building, environmental health, animal care, and other departments. And then general government doesn't include just administration. It also includes IT facilities and other general government functions as well. And those all come to that $86.4 million number that was referenced on the summary slide in terms of the general fund NCC that we're looking at today. We can move on to our next. So the next two charts are regarding our revenue projections for fiscal year 2024, '25. Here we have, and we've seen this, this chart before, but it's been updated based on the most current numbers. What we have projected for the 2024, '25 is roughly $88.8 million. Importantly, that is a reduction, a slight reduction from the current year projections, from the '23, '24 projections. When we have the actuals, we'll know exactly where that, where that comes in. But right now, the projections are coming with a slight decrease, about $55,000 for non-departmental revenue. These revenues, again, and I should have covered this at the beginning, do not include operating transfers in or out, again, in reflecting one-time funding, and then the outs reflecting budget obligations that were mentioned earlier. And this also includes Measure P, or excludes Measure P funding as well, to not overinflate the amount that we have available to appropriate to departments. I mentioned earlier that the $79.37 million is not, does not match to that $88.8 million, and it is because that $78.37 on Slide 4 is adjusted revenue after those operating transfers out. So here, that 88 you're seeing, that's the, not including any of them, the $79.37 is the adjusted amount that we have to appropriate to departments. Then we move to, we see with '25, '26, and I want to highlight here that the estimated amount that we have for fiscal year '25, '26 is in reference to the, in our budget report, there is a recommendation that we move, that we consider moving to a budget year and one model of budgeting. And so we had examples in here just as a, not necessarily as a proof of concept, but as an example of what that might look like. And so looking at our '25, '26 estimated based on the 21, based on the last few year revenues, we would see roughly about a little less than 1% if the trend was to continue, or were to continue. So we can see that even if things remaining static, we're not looking at a large uptick in non-departmental revenue. And I think that's consistent with the narrative that we've, we've heard from the governors may revised, and revenue across the, across the board. We'll move on to the next slide. Now, this one is, is new, and it will certainly be an iterative process, but this is our revenue projection. We discussed this at the last budget workshop. We discussed this at the last budget workshop, and this is our county revenue projections compared with those revenue projections adjusted by CPI. Now, the CPI listed in here is from the California Department of Finance, is where these, these numbers came from, and they, they have multiple categories that they, that they track, including a general California number. Now, what we have here is a longer historical chart, and this is, we're using the fiscal year '27, '18 fiscal year as our base for the, for the increases. And so what you have there, the blue line represents the county revenue that we've had over the years, and then the percent year-to-year increase compared to those same revenues adjusted by the CPI as it, as it was available through the California Department of Finance. And it's always important to note on that 2020, '21 fiscal year, that 13.24% uptick really being out of the ordinary there, and I think it stands out over the, the rest of those, those bullet points, reflecting increase in transient occupancy tax, TOT, sales tax, and cannabis tax. But after that large jump, you can see that the, the lines begin to intersect in the current fiscal year, where if we were adjusting for CPI, again, not an apples-to-apples comparison, but if we were to adjust it with the, that California general CPI number, we would, that number intersects in the current fiscal year, and we start to, we start to see the, the flat, flat growth of the, of the county's non-departmental revenue. We move on to the next slide here. This is the functional area defined again, so just what departments belong to what functional area, as they're published in our county budget book. And then in closing, we will end with the recommendations for the fiscal year 2024, '25 budget. And I'll read each of these. I apologize, there's three slides of recommendations. They are available on the agenda item, on the budget report as well. So I will go through these quickly for you. I won't read them off the, the slide up there, I'll read them in front of me. We have, approve the fiscal year 2024, '25 chief executive officers' proposed budget for the county of Mendocino. Approve the adjustments detailed in the CEO recommended budget adjustments to departments submitted as outlined in Attachment B, general fund, and Attachment C, non-general fund. Approve the fiscal year 2024, '25 department funding requests in Attachment A, directing the auditor controller to return to the Board of Supervisors on June 25, 2024, with a formal resolution adopting the fiscal year 2024, '25 Mendocino County budget based on the above direction. Approve amendments to the position allocation table as listed in Attachment D and Attachment E, directing Human Resources to return to the Board of Supervisors on June 25, 2024, with an updated position allocation table. Approve the funded fixed assets, vehicles, structural improvements, and projects as listed in Attachment G. Approve fiscal year 2023, '24 carry-forward funding prioritized to reduce dependence on one-time funding for fiscal year 2024, '25. And lastly, approve, approve creation of designated reserve for capital improvements for facilities leased by non-county agencies. Approve use of 3,298,283 dollars in designated retirement reserve for fiscal year 2024, '25 budget. Approve the use of 1 million dollars in designated mental health audit reserve for fiscal year 2024, '25 budget. And lastly, accept the fiscal year 2024, '25 proposed budget report. And with that, we will move on to, I think we can close with questions and comments or discussion.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams and Supervisor Jordy?
I, I have several questions. First, every presentation is getting better. I appreciate the work staff put in. There's a lot more detail here, and it's a lot easier to understand. I, I think it's about 95% of the way to what, what I could support. My book, that's an A. So the questions, it looks like we're deficit spending, and one way to deficit spend is to defer expenses, and some of them, you know, the deferral list, given that we're not going to have more revenue next year, I think it's probably, the county will be in a worse position next year, even worse the year after. I would put that value in net present value. And so it's not, I don't have it in front of me, 2 million dollars that we're deferring for IT, you know, maybe 4 or 5 million by the time we actually allocate the funds. Zero-based budgeting isn't just about recursively asking what do you need, it's about justifying every expense, and I think in this dynamic, the justification is to our boss, the taxpayer. So either that should be done in front of the public, or we should publish the documentation, all the justifications that we accumulated in the process today. I think people hear zero-based budgeting, but they don't know exactly what's being done, because there's, there's really nothing to look at as evidence of that process. And I would see that process as weighing the potential uses of funds. We can't do everything we want to do. How are we justifying one expenditure over another? The assessor, I know the assessor's office is behind, and I've, I've been critical of how, how far behind as a county we are. And this is not present staff, this is just a legacy in Mendocino County that for decades we've been trailing. In or, in order to allow them to catch up, they need a budget for training, for software, for modern tools. I don't think they can do it without that. And so some, you know, the public thinks we have a revenue crisis, we're not billing fully, we're not assessed fully, we're not collecting fully, and we point out the software doesn't work. And I think there's some truth to that, it's probably a mix, but the software is problematic. So I don't see anything in this budget that addresses this fundamental problem, and it's, since I've been here, it's been a problem. I think probably seven or eight years back, it started when we decided to switch software. How do you see addressing that? And if we don't begin now, doesn't that mean we're losing more potential revenue every year forward?
If I may, through the chair?
Please, go ahead.
Tony Rakes, Tony Rakes, Deputy CEO. Regarding the, the work on the assessor processes, that's an ongoing activity, speaking both from the budget side and the IT side, having the monumental amount of effort that is going in to try to, to get these processes and the software working for the county as opposed to against our efforts. And, and so you're, you're correct in that this budget presentation did not, does not comment on the property tax software. It's an ongoing activity, and I know we've spoken about it in front of this board before, but really with collaboration with all the departments, auditor controller's office, assessor, and tax collector, really trying to, to hammer a path forward and create solutions that will work for all of us and work for the, the long-term goals.
Yeah, so I, I would think that solution is, so I'm going to throw out an uneducated guess here, 3 to 5 million dollars in today's dollars. And if we don't, if we put it in a million a year for the next several years, we will have infrastructure and tools so that we can begin to catch up, but if we don't do that, we're going to continue trailing behind. I think I heard our assessor on KZYX in an interview state that we may be 70% assessed. And I know that doesn't translate into, into dollars, right? Some of this may be remodels that are lower ticket items, but, but the public is concerned about that, how far behind we are, and we're not taking steps, steps to catch up. So I don't, I don't know exactly what, what the ask is, because I understand, we're already using one-time funds, we don't have any money. But, you know, the other side of that equation is, we're never, we're not, this county won't have money in the future to address it, and every year it's getting worse, and we can only collect maybe four or five years worth, right? So every year, there's money falling off that we're never going to collect, and it's compounding the problem. So I, I, I could, the five of us could bicker about small details. I think that the two concerns for me that I would need addressed in order to support this budget are, one, what we're going to do about the assessor's needs, so that we can begin catching up on revenue. And second, at least a plan to not use one-time money. Last year, I supported the budget and said I would do it one time, but we can't wait a whole year to right-size. We can't be living on one-time money, it's not responsible. And here we are again at about 7 million dollars one-time money. And I have the public reaching out to me, saying, this is irresponsible, what are you doing? I don't have a good justification for it. If it were a downturn, a dip in the economy, and we thought we would recover in a year or two, and I could justify that's what a reserve is for, but this looks like it's a structural deficit, and it, it's unlikely to get better. So at some point, we're going to have to fix the structure, and if we spend every last dollar, it'll become very difficult. In other words, the suffering that we would feel today in right-sizing will be amplified in the future.
CEO Antle, did you want to address those two concerns before I move on to my colleagues here? Have Jordy, McGordy, and then Hachak.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. We have been working with the assessor's office, we have made phone calls to find additional support for contracts, a contracting assessor, and through that, I have determined that there's not an agency that works on above-surface, like surface property, that those are geothermal contracts, and they're assessing the value underneath the land. So asking and talking with that agency that they suggested we hire out for retired folks to come in and assist. I've been working through that with HR and the assessor. We had a, most recently, a recruiter reach out to us to see if we needed that service. So we are continuing to work those avenues. To the point that Deputy CEO Rakes mentioned, through the process, we have been evaluating, we are getting started at assessing what is really needed with the property tax system, where are things broken, are not working to the highest functionality that is needed in this county. Is this a short-term project? No. We know that it's taken several years to get the current system up and going. So it is going to be a long-term project. With regards to the use of one-time funds, yes, it's very stressful to all of us to be doing that again this year, as mentioned, and rightfully so, I don't begrudge anyone. There was 7 million of dollars of increase to wages, and that has put us back in current year as well as into the future years. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Jordy?
So I did also ask another question to the CEO and the fiscal team, and maybe they could go elaborate a little bit on it, because I was hoping you were going to incorporate it into the presentation here. So the current budget that we're living with right now, we, as Supervisor Williams just said, we did use, we did budget 7 million dollars in one-time revenues, reserves, et cetera, for ongoing expenses, which was the first time in my knowledge that the counties needed to do that in at least 11 years. So not a point of pride, but a necessity for this current year's budget. But, but through efforts that were ongoing throughout the current fiscal year, staff in various departments and the executive office, et cetera, have worked that down. We last heard, about two weeks ago, a month ago, is now estimated to be only maybe 2 million dollars of the seven that we will have spent.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So that's, that's, I think, some of the messaging that, that I think probably the board and probably the public wants to hear, is that although this year's budget, again, to be a balanced budget, prudently is, is proposing 7 million dollars in one-time expenses, or one-time revenues and/or reserves, it's not the hope, it's certainly the aspiration of the staff, that that number through cost efficiencies that can't be, may be proven at this point, aren't implemented at this point, but are hoped to be implemented during the course of the year, will be worked down to something substantially less than 7 million. So maybe you could elaborate a little bit on that.
Chair, if I may. Yeah, so in the Budget Deficit Turnaround Plan, which is attached to your document, you'll see there's active, there's completed projects, initiatives, and there's active initiatives. And I could read through some of those. Software licensing review, TOT and cannabis tax audit, property tax system review, garage management models, we're really deep in that process right now, reorganization of General Service Agency, working to collate planning and building and environmental health in the Fort Bragg into one center, so reducing our footprint in Fort Bragg. Property tax auctions, those are in the process of moving forward, and property tax system evaluations. Again, upcoming initiative is the business license review process that was mentioned earlier, reorganization of code enforcement, revision of an MOU with the UC Farm Advisors' Office, improved collection rate on unpaid fees, power purchase agreements, and then reevaluation of our investment portfolio, which I believe Supervisor Jordy, you did prior this week, and that will continue to evolve and move forward. Those are some of the high-level ones that are important.
Okay, so just, yeah, well, thanks. I appreciate reiterating that, because I think that's part of what people need to hear about the budget, that it's not a stagnant document, it's a working document, and improvements are expected throughout the course of the year. A couple other thoughts that I had, kind of high-level, not as important as what you just went through, but I think, I think it would be helpful, I know that one of the items in the Golden Gate Bridge Initiative early on was myth-busting, and, you know, about the county budget situation. I think a lot of employees, members of the public, maybe don't have an accurate understanding of how the county is financed, and they think that the county has plenty of money, they just aren't, somebody's choosing not to spend it, I guess. And that's just not true. There is a structural deficit, our costs are going up faster than revenues. And personally, I believe it will probably be an ongoing project of the county for at least half a decade, if not more, to right-size the county government, bring in new revenues, and, and where possible, downsize county government. So hopefully on the administrative side. So I think along those lines, I think it would be a small thing, I think it would be helpful to have maybe like just a paragraph reminder in the CEO report each month, that just kind of summarizes the ongoing forever work here of, of, of finding efficiencies, improving revenues, and, and an email address where county employees and/or members of the public can just send in suggestions on an ongoing basis. I think it serves two purposes, and one, it reminds the employees that this is, it's not a one-and-done thing, it's a forever project, and two, that their input is welcome in, in giving those suggestions. So that's just a small one. Another one is on the healthcare costs, I was grateful to hear that the costs were a little bit lower than expected. I don't know what that means, it still probably, I'm guessing it still meant that there was an increase in costs, it's just the increase maybe weren't as great as originally thought. But on the healthcare costs, I've never seen a definitive answer, but my understanding is that county employees who have a partner and who have left the county plan and have gone on supplemental county health insurance are saving the county some noticeable amount of money by leaving the county plan. And, and those employees who have done that have actually financially benefited, because the supplemental insurance by the county covers, provides them with greater coverage than they received either on the county plan or on their spouse's plan. So I've never really seen a whole lot of information from the county to the employees about the benefits of leaving the county plan and joining it. I wrote a little column for the retirement newsletter, you know, giving people some tips to think about that they could cut their costs, and one of those that I included was, was if you have the opportunity to leave the county plan and go to spouse's plan, because the supplemental plan by the county not only saves the county money, but it, like I said, it quite possibly, conservatively, would be a financial benefit to the employee of about, I estimated about 3,000 dollars. Could easily be more than that, depending on their household and how they use health insurance. So I just think it would be helpful, given the fact that we do have county employees in the HR department, I think in the executive office, who focus on the healthcare plan, to maybe have something every other month in the CEO newsletter, or just a, a random newsletter from the HR department, reminding people in advance of the January enrollment a few times about how does that program work, why might they want to pick it? Because ultimately, it would save the county money, and in my opinion, it would, it would be a financial boost to any employee who could avail themselves to it in almost all circumstances. And then a couple other, just one other small item, so we, we have a couple different position allocation tables. I didn't really see where it showed like the net. I saw add, delete, add, delete, but I didn't really see what's the net effect. Is the net effect the same? Is it a reduction total? Someone just sort of, kind of focus our attention on what's the net effect of those add/deletes?
I do see a team member from HR coming forward to the podium. Give her a moment. I do see a team member from HR coming forward to the podium. Give her a moment.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Board, CEO Antle, County Council, Randy Dalzell, HR Manager. On that Attachment D and E, at the very top, there is a gray bar that shows the net of add/deletes. However, I can report that on Attachment D, there is a net of 87 deletes, and on Attachment E is a net delete of 55 FTE, for a total of approximately 142 deletes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. I did not see that.
Okay. Let's go ahead and go to, were you complete with your questions? Supervisor McGordy, Hashak, and then back to Supervisor Williams?
So, I just wanted to comment that, you know, the four years that I've been here, almost, this is probably the most complete and sort of logical budget process that I've seen. And the, to note, are the Budget Narrative CEO, as well as Budget Deficit Turnaround Plan, are two really, really useful documents. I think we can share these with the public to kind of explain to them what's going on, where we sit. So, these are really helpful to us. And I, that's kind of the bulk of thinking about on this, and I'm also curious about if we're any closer to what our carry-forward funds are going to be from fiscal year 23-24.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, CEO Antle, Sarah Pierce, Acting Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. We are in the final stages of closing 22-23. We, I do have the draft ACFIR. We will be back in front of the Board on the June 25th meeting, I think it's the 25th, to present that with CLA. There has been a slight change in that carry-forward, which I can report out at that time. There's a potential that it's increased a little bit, but as for is the 23-24 carry-forward, that will not be known until we start closing this fiscal year, which will be July and August. The intention of the Auditor's Office is to have a timely close, and anticipating closing somewhere around October of this year. So, we will not know that until closer to quarter one. Report out.
Yeah, that's, I guess, pretty normal. But I just, again, compliment the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector's Office for doing a much better job of giving us clarity as to what we're facing financially, being able to answer and demonstrate to particular employees where we stand financially, and what our financial constraints are for pay raises and things that we would like to give employees but can't necessarily. So, thank you for all that.
Thank you, Supervisor Hashak.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the presentation. Certainly, there's a couple things I'd like to highlight in the budget that I see as positives, is, one is using that budget year and one for forecasting going into the future. You know, that gives us a better idea about what we do today, how it affects next year, following year. So, that's a, that's a real positive for seeing where we are. The TEATER Plan, you know, it looks like we're expecting $1.5 million from that. So, that's really, I think it helps the budget, and it's very good that we're even able to get that kind of number at this point. So, I hope that pans out. You know, there was a 10% drop in electrical usage. There is a 27% drop in gas utility usage. You know, I think the LMSA and that idea about joining with a different JPA, you know, is a very positive. We put $1 million into that with the PG&E money, and it looks like we're using about $250,000 of it. And so, one of the things that we haven't explored is, you know, some of our traditional partners, like, we heard a presentation this morning from MCRCD, the Resource Conservation District, and the good work they're doing. Two years ago, we put aside $45,000 a year. We did that for two years. You know, in my conversations with the RCD is that they're, they're willing to take less because of our budget constraints. But I think that if we put in $25,000 a year for the RCD for two years, you know, we could get that $50,000 from somewhere, maybe using the PG&E money that hasn't been used yet, and the LMSA area where we still have $750,000 in that line item, it looks like we're not going to be able to use. So, I would, we come to a motion, I would expect, I would like to add that we direct staff to find that money outside of the carbon reduction line item, but within that PG&E allocation. And, you know, over the last year, you know, we, Supervisor Jerdy and I worked on that voluntary incentive separation plan with staff, and certainly, everyone was very collaborative. I see some of the people who worked on that program with us. And that in itself has saved over $600,000 this year. The county librarian position, when we consolidated that, that's another $120,000 that we're saving. You know, there's ongoing projects with Supervisor Jerdy and myself looking at the museum and the model, and we're looking at reducing that even further than what it is right now, when we go to this private nonprofit model. And so, I think that we can save a couple hundred thousand dollars there, too. And then we've streamlined the personal taxes, the amnesty program with planning and building. You know, those are all efforts to really be more efficient and using the strategic plan, making this government more effective. So, I think there's a lot of things going on, and, you know, we need to support the CEO in carrying out the further plan for what, what the plan is, you know, for reductions. And we've given that task to the Golden Gate Bridge Initiative and the CEO to make those things happen. I think we're on the way. You know, certainly, using $7 million of, of one-time-only funds at this point is not good, but at the same time, we as a board have approved $7 million in wage increases, and I think that that was really needed. It was necessary for, for our staff to acknowledge what's going on in the world and the need for those kind of increases to get us, get us up to a market rate. But at the same time, you know, we are using that one-time-only money, and, you know, that's how we're getting to a balanced budget at this point. Hopefully, with these new efficiencies and everything, we'll be closer to, to a structural neutral budget. So, I think that, you know, we, and we made some hard choices this year, too. We, we had to increase the fees, which brought in $1.5 million. And we didn't go for the TOT, we didn't go for $20 an hour for IHSS, but we do have an agreement with them. And I, that's another thing, is that that's going to cost, I think, about $640,000. And so, is that accounted for? Because we have a tentative agreement, is my understanding, with IHSS, SEIU 2015.
I believe it has been accounted for in the budget.
Is it, do we know that that's accounted for at this point in the budget?
If I may, Chair.
Please do, yeah.
Yeah, there's a portion of it that's accounted for. I don't know that we've got that full amount, the final full amount, because all this was done prior to where we are today with that tentative agreement. But I think a good portion of it is.
Okay. So, so we're, I guess my point is that we have made some hard decisions this year. We're going to have to make hard decisions next year, too. But overall, I appreciate the work that's been done on this budget. Now, like we said at the beginning of last year, when we approved the budget, we needed to start work on it right away to get to a balanced budget. And I believe that that's what staff did. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams, did you have an additional?
Yeah, just one last. I, I think what we're seeing is the natural result of government being the largest employer. This county, 80% of hospital patients are, are government patients. And, you know, half the county is on public assistance. We're missing the medium and large businesses that can provide living wages. I don't think it's entirely the county's role or obligation to solve that problem, but I think we could, we could contribute positively to enabling more business activity. I look at the budget and wonder, what are we doing for real economic development? Because if we don't get some economic development, this county will continue to be on a decline. Every year, we have less revenue to work with. We're going to make hard decisions next year and following, John, I agree with you, but we're never going to get to a point where we're meeting public expectations. Something has to shift in the equation. And I think McGordy and Hashak pushing the economic development position was the right move. I was lukewarm at the time. Now, I see that we probably even need to go more in that direction, because if the county doesn't lead economic development, who will? And without more business activity in the county, we're going to continue on a path of decline.
Supervisor Jerdy, I haven't spoken yet about the budget. Did you want to, okay. I, I just want to thank the, the team for all of the work that they've done. I, I think this has been probably one of the most transparent budgets the county has seen. It's been a very lengthy process. It's occurred over many meetings, and I understand that that's hard sometimes for folks to track that are in the public, but I just want to appreciate all of the department heads that, and the CEO's team, and everybody that has worked so diligently to try to reduce costs, understanding that the Board made the decision to increase wages, and that impacted each department, and that moving forward, we're going to have to continue to work on that as wages may increase again, so that we can keep appropriate level wages for our team members here in Mendocino County. I wanted to talk about the use of one-time funding. We also have an obligation for retirement funds that I believe is due to, we're due to stop paying that. And if we could just have an update what year that is, that's $8 million or $7 million per year that we pay right now?
Yeah, if I may, through the Chair, Sarah Pierce, Acting Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. It is close to $8 million a year. We prepay the pension obligation bonds, so cash, the last time cash will go out will be in July of 2025, which is 25-26 fiscal year. The last time the expenses will be incurred is 26-27 fiscal year. So, we will be paid off with our pension obligation bonds in expenses by June 30th of 2027.
And that'll be an additional $8 million?
It will be an additional $8 million in a reduction in expenses that we will be currently seeing.
Okay. I think, I think that's important to continue to keep out in the public that there is, you know, a brighter side in the future. We are going to continue as the entire country, as the world catches up with inflation, and we deal with the changes that, you know, we saw from the COVID shelter in place, and all of the economic impacts that came from that. Rural counties tend to be five years behind, so certainly, these hard times are not going to end anytime soon, but we need to, do need to keep track of, of what we have on the horizon. I just wanted to say, you know, I very much appreciate all of the work that, first, let me say, I'm very proud of the work that happened with the PG&E funds and getting those funds out to the communities that were most impacted by that disaster. That was my first year on the Board, and that was really important work that happened, getting those funds out, and we continue to get those funds out to those communities. I, I very much appreciate the work that the RCD does in our community. Since I've been on this Board, we have made the decision to not fund NGOs through county finances. We have worked with the Arts Council of Mendocino County. We no longer fund them. EDFC, Economic Development Finance Corporation, the West Company, we've made decisions over multiple years to not fund NGOs through county funds. And I think that that's a hard decision to make. We're going to continue to have those conversations as we talk about the social services budget and what might happen with the, any kind of changes within that department, within that agency, as we've seen in the presentation today, and have had several conversations about reducing their general fund impact. So, I just, I appreciate Supervisor Hashak, but I don't think that, for me, I, I think we've made a very transparent decision to move away from funding NGOs, and so, I, I think that's important, as we have many NGOs in our community that are doing great work. And I think that's it. Supervisor Jerdy, and I'm sorry, I don't know if Williams or McGordy was first, but...
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I do want to support what Supervisor Hashak proposed. The Resource Conservation District is actually, it's kind of an unusual special district in that it, it doesn't have a property tax. Most of the districts that we all interact with, water districts or whatever, they either have a utility fee, or in some cases, both that and a property tax. I don't know the reasons why this special district was created in Mendocino County decades ago without a parcel tax. It's kind of odd. But I do want to see them develop an endowment over time, so that they won't require contribution in the perfect world from the county Mendocino. But, but I, I think there is a vehicle, as proposed by Supervisor Hashak, to give them, you know, I don't know what it was, some sort of small allotment, some sort of small allotment for, for one or two years. But I did want to ask a question in the budget presentation. So, we have a number, you know, we've got 26 attachments to this item, so it's a lot to digest and maneuver through. In the May 7 budget presentation, which was one of the attachments, it lists recommendations and including executive office to work with the Department of Social Services to reduce general fund impact, and relating to the Department of Social Services. We didn't really today hear a presentation on the changes that are either currently underway or may be underway with Social Services. And I guess what I'm wondering is what might be said at today's meeting, and/or is there a proposal for some sort of presentation to the Board sometime in the not-too-distant future? Because I just imagine, you know, with a number of resignations that took place in the last, you know, six months, there's a lot of vacancies that there may well be some strategizing in terms of how to reorganize that department. Again, maybe that isn't fully gelled at this point, so maybe today isn't the right day for it. But I just am asking, what's kind of the expectation for when some kind of presentation on that would, would go to the Board?
If I may, through the Chair. Yes, we are working with them, meet with them weekly, the team over there. They're coming up with some creative and innovative ideas. I probably would suggest we need a couple more months to do that. Recently, we did have a meeting with Robert Menkeah from San Mateo County that included the budget ad hoc to talk about the uses of realignment. So, we're, we're taking that deeper dive into it, and hopefully by end of summer, we would have something before you.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
So, I, I think it is good to look more than one year out. I made the request, could we begin quasi-budgeting a second year, just to start looking at what that, that may entail? But if you look, if you look beyond the year, you need to look at both revenue and liabilities. And while it's true, we're going to stop paying the pension obligation for underfunding the pension, we are going to have labor at the jail. And I would, I would just think that's three and a half, $4 million in today's dollars, and that'll be growing. And you look at the changes in, from the legislature and from court decisions, there's going to be more and more workload on law enforcement and the jail in this county. So, I'm with you on looking ahead, but I don't want to paint a picture for the public that it's rosy, that we're going to have more money later. It looks like we're going to have more money, but we're going to need to have even more expenses.
Supervisor McGordy?
Yeah, just as Supervisor Jerdy pointed out-
Yeah, just as Supervisor Jordy pointed out, the Mendocino County Resource Conservation District is not an NGO. They're actually part of the county special district. They're not a property tax. They've always come out of a small cost share from a general fund. And I support, you know, a low level of financing programs, because they do bring in a lot in terms of grants, doing a lot of good work. The last time they were in front of us, I was curious about what they were doing on their administrative overhead. It'd be good to get a report back from them, if they're actually including that in their grants, because it sounds like they weren't. So, they have the ability to sort of self-fund. Oh, I see we have somebody there from on the RCD.
We'll get to public comment in a moment if we just finish up the conversation with the board. Supervisor Jordy or Supervisor Hascheck, did you have your phone up?
Well, I was just going to respond to Supervisor McGordy's question, that in their report that they just sent us, they kind of line out how they've increased their administrative costs and how they worked with the county to make sure that they were including those in their. So, it is in there.
Chair, can we, just so that public comment can be steered by where the board currently stands, is there agreement on the board that we're not cutting RCD?
No, I have a clarification question, because RCD is already, is not included in the budget. So, before we move on to that, I believe Supervisor Hascheck made a proposal to fund $25,000 for two years, for a total of $50,000 from PG&E settlement funds.
Right.
So, just for clarification, before any continued conversation, that was a recommendation for two years of funding of $25,000 each from PG&E funds and not from general fund. CEO Antle?
I understood to bring that back. That wasn't part of today's motion. I understood to bring that back at a prior date, first quarter, but I need clarification on that.
You could bring that back at first quarter.
Okay. And Supervisor Jordy or Supervisor Williams?
Supervisor Hascheck, would you be willing to adjust that to be not two years, but indefinite? Because this is our RCD. It's not a third party. They're with us. They have no other funding source. I don't want them to live in an environment of panic that they don't have funds to continue. I think they do better work where they know they have continuity of funding. And it's inevitable, the board will fund them in the future, and so why not just be upfront that this is an ongoing arrangement?
Well, I guess that, you know, and I would look for staff to bring back, you know, that at first quarter. But, you know, if we're looking at PG&E funds, then that's limited. And so, I don't want to make it totally ongoing. I guess CEO has something to say about that.
I'll let County Council go.
If I may through the chair, there are some limitations on the board's ability to bind future boards to budgeting decisions.
Okay. This, I would like to go to Supervisor Jordy.
So, I just maybe question for staff, back just to kind of button up the pension obligation bond funds. So, recap, almost 20 years ago, the county thought they were fully funding the gap in the pension fund by floating the bond and putting the cash into the retirement system. The reforms to the way the plan was funded didn't happen concurrently, and so new gaps were created in the plan since then. But anyway, those last payments on that pension obligation bond, as you said, was 2627. It's about eight million dollars a year. I just wanted to recap, though, because it's not 100% coming out of the general fund.
That's what I wanted.
My recollection is it's something like a 55-45 split general fund, 55% 45 non-general fund, something like that. So, it does free up money. But I also want to remind us of the conversation we had only a couple months ago on borrowing money from Measure B. The intent of the board, again, not obligating future boards, but the intent was to pay it back as soon as possible. And there was reference to those very same dollars being freed up in '27, and that that could be used to accelerate the payment on, if money is borrowed from Measure B for the jail wing, that that could make the payments pay it off more quickly. So, this kind of reminds me of a situation that the Fort Bragg City Council got into in 1997, '98, where they end up spending the same dollars on multiple projects. And then, next thing you know, when the audit came in, they had a deficit. So, you know, either these pension obligation bond funds, when they're not being made, can be used for paying off the Measure B loan more quickly, or it can be available for other county purposes, but it can't be used for both in the same year. Just wanted to point that out.
If I may through the chair, that's exactly what I wanted to comment on, was that while there may be eight million, it is a combination of both general fund and non-general fund impacts. And that's why we believe it's important to start budgeting out multiple years at a time, to be able to see, you know, what expenses and revenue we will be having.
Great, thank you. So, with this, I would like to open up to public comment. If there are members of the public in the room that wish to come forward, please go ahead and do so. And if you could state your name for the record, that's helpful. And if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature on the platform or press star nine to be identified to speak.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Stephanie Garbrand Sierra with the Mendocino County Resource Conservation District. So, pleased to be here. Board of Supervisors, thank you for having me. Very interesting discussion about our agency. Thank you so much, Supervisor Hascheck, and our supervisors who are looking to make, give us some stability for the future. As you know, we are a government agency. We are not an NGO, and we leverage your dollars into more dollars for this community. I was particularly interested in the conversation this morning about economic development. And, you know, we talk about carbon sequestration, and we also talk about economic development, and we get to do both. And one of the reasons why our agency is so important, with the money that you are able to give to us, you know, I forwarded to you a bullet list of approximately 30 different grants and really tangible things we were able to bring into this county, and we're proud of that. And the main thing is not only the economic, not only the environmental benefit, the carbon benefits that we bring, but we also bring economic development to this county. We've put to work millions and millions of dollars to contractors in this county, and that is not to be scoffed at. You know, one of the things that we're able to do that you're not able to do is we have, despite the fact we're a government agency, we have a different contracting code. So, we get to prioritize local businesses when we put things out to bid. You're not able to do that, and we are. So, for a great example, we were able to get a contract, a contract we bid out for forestry work in the Red Mountain area. It was a multimillion-dollar contract. We were able, we use our triple bottom line contracting criteria, which prioritizes local businesses and environmentally friendly businesses. We had two contractors that won that bid. One was, went from, the low bid was actually from Santa Rosa. Another bid was a local right in that area who had never really done this kind of work before, but they got part of this multimillion-dollar bid. After the end of the year, that company was able to develop its staff and locally build, and it became a powerhouse. And then, when the second rounding fund came around, they were the low bidder. And so, that was an enormous success story for, it was Rosenthal Timber Company, and now they were able to do the whole rest of the contract, which we're really proud of. So, those are the kind of things that your RCD does. And so, we, you know, keep in mind, we are a government agency. You have asked for lots of grant funding for fire resistance, and you get to contract with us without a bidding process, because we are a government agency. Therefore, when you get grant funds, you can contract with us. We can use our bidding process. We can leverage that to buy, to build locally. And we're proud of that. We're really proud of that. Because of the funds you were able to, we're very grateful for to support us over the years. You've given us between $45,000 to $75,000 a year. We leverage that. We have an incredible return on our investment into this county. And thank you for recognizing that. We do appreciate you very, very much. The carbon work we've been able to do affects all of our four areas, and we do forestry. Obviously, the reduction in catastrophic wildfires is a reduction in carbon. Our stream restoration work, we just wrote an incredible grant to WCB. It's a $5.3 million stream restoration grant in the Navarro, and we're really hoping that that will be successful. And that's a planning grant that will turn into an implementation grant. You know, one of the reasons why we lowered our ass this year is in recognition of your, we know you're in budget crisis, and we completely understand that, but we think that we can turn your dollars into real work for this county. We seriously looked at our indirect costs and how we can raise those. And Supervisor McGordy came to our office, and we talked through the budget with him. We are making sure that we get the maximum indirect whenever we can. Because of that, we did turn our deficit. We now have a balanced budget. Very proud of that, and we're growing. We want to grow more. And the more we grow, the more we can bring things to this county. And we've, again, we appreciate your support. One of the grants we were very proud of, that we were able to secure through your funding, was a funding with the Department of Conservation. And we asked for $1.3 million, and it was to build capacity and to allow us to write grants. And we were very excited about that, and it was one of the reasons why we're going to be good during the next year. That was pulled during the May revise. So, we no longer have that grant, and we're very disappointed with that. So, you know, but we will carry on. We have other grants, and we're doing well. And, but we do need your, we do need your support, and we appreciate the partnership. It would be also great if we could have a point of contact in staff, which we do not have now. It was mentioned, do you talk to staff? I've reached out to staff. I've never gotten much foothold, and I would love to have a point of contact to talk about the work we do, talk about how we can partner with you in your contracts, and that would also be a tremendous help. But if you have any questions, I'm here, and thank you again.
Supervisor Jordy, do you have a question?
Just a brief comment. I mean, I know the Resource Conservation District does work in all corners of the county, and close to the urban areas as well. But I just, in particular, when your agency has done work in the most remote parts of the county, I often think about the fact that these are parts of the county that really often see almost no government services. I mean, there's areas of the county where maybe they get a little attention with the county roads. Maybe they're actually accessing their property from a state highway, not even a county road. Maybe they get some government services from their local volunteer fire department, and the county maybe is assisting that fire department. But in some cases, your agency is one of the few helping hands, you could say, of government, and by extension, very indirectly, the county of Mendocino, to those far-flung parts of the county that I think honestly often feel like they're not really a recipient of county services. So, I appreciate the fact that that's at least a component of what your agency does.
Well, it absolutely is. And also, we're a point of contact. People call us, and they think they're calling the county. And so, we answer a lot of questions. We help connect people. We're sort of your government agency in rural areas to help people. I did have one additional point that I forgot to put in. I know that you talked about either considering it today or putting it off to the first quarter. I would respectfully ask that you treat it, do it today, mainly because this board is not going to look the same later. And I would really like some assured, some feeling that this feeling of support for our agency will continue. So, if you could consider it today, I would so appreciate it.
Before we go to Supervisor McGordy, Supervisor Hascheck had suggested two years from PG&E settlement funds, which is my understanding, when we did the previous funding, that was a similar thing. And it sounds like you've turned around the deficit, so thank you very much for that, and congratulations. Were you asking the board to consider funding ongoing, or in a two years, for two years?
We would like a two-year funding, absolutely. And the reason is, because we're a government agency, and grant funds, while they have indirect funds, often don't fund the grant writing. And that's why the DOC grant was so important, because it actually had capacity building. Most of our grants are actually for concrete things. So, there's like a 10% indirect, but it really doesn't cover the kinds of burden that a government agency has. And I know that you're all familiar with. A good example is, oh, we now have to do a violence prevention plan. All these unfunded mandates that hit you guys, it hits us too. One public information request could bankrupt us, a big one, because we do not have funds for those sorts of things, because we don't have continuous funding. Most RCDs do. Most RCDs do have, their counties either give them a regular amount every year, or they get a tax increment, or there's a property tax increment. And, but for some reason in this county, there isn't one. So, we have come begging every year, and we don't mind doing that, because we feel like we provide good services and we're worth it.
Supervisor McGordy?
Well, kind of two points. So, in order for industries to thrive, they do need to have some resources. So, agriculture's done okay. So, we have cooperative extension, the Department of Ag, Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is a USDA program, and Farm Service Agency, and also the Resource Conservation District. So, farmers generally can get a lot of assistance, particularly during disasters and things like that. I see the RCD as really a key player. I don't see why we'd want to put this off at first quarter. If the money is there, what are you waiting for? And that's the first point. The second point is, we really need to have some sort of support or contact for our special districts. So, right now, I'm trying to help Hopland Cemetery District is having some issues with being able to take care of their obligations to run the cemetery. And I honestly don't really know who to talk to in county government. And in fact, I ended up going to one of the other cemetery districts for basic advice, but there's still more to it. So, I don't know in your org chart, CEO Antle, where you see special districts fitting in, but or if you've thought about it.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Certainly, I'm willing to contact and work with any of them that have questions. I would just, again, question the need for funding, as we're pretty tight right now. So, if everyone's going to come forward, we would need to put a policy in place on what that could look like, not just for one, but for all. Again, especially during this time of tight finances.
So.
You have set aside some of the PG&E fund. Off the top of my head, I know there's roughly 1.6 in the carbon reduction. Other than that, I cannot speak to if there's any other money. I think Supervisor Hascheck mentioned some money with regards to the JPA, where we have about 750 left. So, those are the two buckets that I know of in the PG&E funding that you have available to provide to this agency, should you so choose.
So, I wasn't thinking so much about funding necessarily, as this is a case of where special districts have an assessment that comes off of taxable. So, it's basically they're receiving funds from the county, and they're having some difficulty in spending the money in a way that they can understand because of interactions with the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, not necessarily at the moment, but in the past. So, who?
Well, I think that's a good place to start. I mean, we've made, you all have made some changes in that area for a reason, to help build those relationships back. So, if it's how they can spend the funding that they are receiving for us, they should work with auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector.
If I may through the chair, I have been in communication with, I think her name's Catherine, at the Cemetery District?
Catherine Collier just resigned.
Okay. So, if there's another person I can be in contact with, I'm more than happy to have a conversation. Thank you.
So, after this conversation, I would move to put the RCD on this year's budget and not wait till first quarter?
Second, and would you consider 30 instead of 25?
I have to talk to our money handler here.
It's a comment, it's a budget dust. You know, we're talking about spending hundreds of millions of dollars. You look at the value that the RCD provides in local wages, benefit to the environment, ability for the county to contract. I mean, this is pennies for what we get.
Well, and it is addressing the carbon reduction, so, yeah, I could support that.
Clarification. Are you asking for $30,000 for two years?
Yes.
From PG&E, from the PG&E carbon reduction funds?
Yes, to be included this year's budget.
So, $60,000 for two years?
Yep, correct.
Supervisor Hascheck?
Well, the carbon money is going to be used up very quickly, because we have an energy consultant online now, and they're going to do the contracting work. And so, you know, my idea was And so, you know, my idea was, if we use that money from the LMSA, that we had a million dollars put away, we used 250 of it, and now we have 750,000 going to this other model. And so that money's sitting there. And it seems like that's an appropriate, you know, that would be a good use.
Yeah, we've had a presentation on that money and it would be used to seed fund a new program. So even though it's sitting there, it does have a designated intention. Supervisor Williams?
Well, if I could just add, I think that we're looking at the cost being about 40,000 a year for that new LMSA model, and that, so we have 750,000 in it.
I think that, I think that's a different, my understanding is different than what you're describing. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think it's two different discussions. And I'm, I'm with you, we may be able to repurpose some of that money. But today, it seems like this other pool of money isn't appropriate for the use we're talking about. With the LMSA, I think we'll have the EMS community upset with us if we repurpose it without having a notice discussion. Right? First, we would want to sweep that funds and say, we're doing something different, that money's available, and then talk about how to repurpose it.
County Council Ross, did you?
Yes, if I may, through the chair, James Ross, interim county council. I wanted to make the board aware that pursuant to the government code, specifically Sections 29064 and 29088, a revision to the recommended budget that is proposed after the start of the public hearing needs to be in writing and filed with the clerk of the board before it can be considered.
I see Supervisor McGordy has his pad out here and a pen.
Supervisor McGordy, did you have a comment or question? Supervisor Hashak?
Well, okay. I guess I'm looking, what you just said, county council, was that we can't do this. If we do it outside of the budget presentation, if we're looking at PG&E money, can't do it right now? That what I'm hearing?
Saying is that it can't be done by a verbal motion. The request for the revision must be in writing, filed with the clerk of the board before it can be considered.
So we'd have to take a break?
Or?
At the, the board's discretion or the chair's discretion.
Or could we give direction that it comes back on June 25th, as of written?
If you do that, it's going to be out, assuming you're not continuing the budget hearing to that date, it would be outside the budget process. You could certainly come back with a budget amendment at a later date.
Okay, I have on my agenda, final budget hearing for June 25th. Supervisor Jurdie, am I forecasting a pause?
Just, I'm just going to suggest that this, at 12:50 might be an appropriate time to take a lunch break. And then, and then in the meantime, one of the supervisors can work with county staff to provide a written budget amendment, which would be uploaded to the county website, distributed in writing, and then we can conclude the budget item in the afternoon.
So let's go ahead and take a, I believe we had, yeah, well, let's go ahead and finish public expression and make sure.
And yes, I just want to clarify, given that you're, the comment was that you were going to continue public comment, if it's done prior to the close of public comment, it requires a three-fifths vote. If it's done after the close of public comment, it requires a four-fifths vote to approve.
I'm just going to finish hearing public comment for people that are in the room, take a lunch break, and then come back to the public hearing.
Just wanted everybody to know what the ground rules were.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public in the room that wish to come forward on the proposed budget? And then also, anybody online can use the Zoom feature to raise their hand or press star nine.
Chairman O'Haraan, members of the board, CEO Antle, county council Ross, my name is Patrick Hickey. I'm the field representative with SEIU Local 1021. In the proposed 2425 budget, the county will eliminate 142 vacant and unfunded positions. This is about 11% of the county's overall workforce. Most of these positions haven't been funded for some time, but the county doesn't really explain what changes in programs or services will occur with this reduction. What work were the 142 employees going to do? And since we are eliminating those positions, what won't get done? The board needs to make some hard decisions to reach a balanced budget. But it's important that it be clear-eyed and transparent with the public and with the staff. What programs and services will the county be canceling or reducing with this dramatic reduction in positions? It's unrealistic to think that technology and increased efficiency will make up the difference. The county will be doing less with less. Things will take longer, response times will suffer, roads will continue to deteriorate. One need only look at the recent grand jury report that once again highlights the challenges faced by family and children's services because of short staffing. Social services, as the largest department, takes the biggest hit with 42 positions being cut, 10 being social workers and social worker supervisors. Public health is second with 23 positions eliminated. The Department of Transportation is close to, is a close third with 22 positions eliminated. We need to be honest with ourselves, the community and county staff. As we shrink our staffing, we must also reduce our expectations. Some things that the county used to do will need to stop and other things will take longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, seeing no hands raised on line. Supervisor Jurdie?
Yeah, just maybe when we come back, and we'll take more public comment in the afternoon, maybe if county staff could just sort of clarify, with these positions deleted, will the county still have, just going to throw out a number, still have essentially 1,100 funded and filled positions? We've been hovering around 1,150 for about several years now. And I'm just curious, will, with this action, will we still have something in the neighborhood of 1,100 positions still filled and funded after this action?
CEO Antle?
Yes, when we remove those, and I would look to HR for the exact number, I think we have currently over 1,500 positions listed. So you're removing 137. This is following direction that this board took to reduce the size earlier on. These positions have been vacant for over 18 months, 18 months. So these are positions that have not been filled in quite some time. And to your point, we have not been over 1,100 positions, except for maybe during COVID, when we had the extra help. At this point, I'm not sure again, but I think we're running about 1,098 or 1,078 currently of active, active positions. So this is just cleaning up that position allocation table with all those positions. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. I think I sometimes get the numbers wrong, because of the retirement system, there are a handful of employees of the state at the courthouse who are on that list, and that's why the numbers I see are always a little bit larger.
So I would like to take a break. We could have a scheduled one-hour lunch break, or we could take a half an hour break. But I guess Supervisor Hashak, work with county council and the clerk to make sure that the recommendation is, is put into the record appropriately, can come back to the public hearing, have additional public comment, make sure that no supervisors have additional comment before we close the public hearing. We only have one other item listed on our agenda after this item. So I just want to check with my colleagues if you're fine with a half-hour break or if you need a full hour.
Half hour.
Okay. And I did check with the clerk of the board and they're fine with a half-hour break. Back after that. So let's come back to open session at 1:30. Thank you.
And also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned.
I went from a very, like, rough type of life. I was homeless and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage, because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
Yeah, because she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space, where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know, they've got great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was going to have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently. When we started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her and everything I do, I do it for her.
And when you're in baby world, you're, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Nett has been wonderful, she's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you, you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage, because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information, so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit mendoready.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're going to do, what you're going to take with you, how you're going to communicate, where you're going to go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, mendoready.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit mendoready.org today, where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, mendoready.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared, so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I'm very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Well, I thought that I wanted something totally different, like a more frigid program, not too close to family. And through the program, we realized that we also became a family with her because she supported us in difficult moments.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from a lot of family history of drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
How to educate her. How to educate a child. Because we never... It was our first time as parents.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me. Even though I was not a first-time mom, I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you. Especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes that and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something. You know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college. See if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
I think if someone is about to be a mom, the first thing I would do is recommend the program because it gives you a lot of support, a lot of information. And above all, it's an emotional guide. It gives you a different vision of how to be a dad here, maybe in this country.
It's a beautiful program because she's a good person and she's taken it very well.
I thought it was just going to be a program of guidance, maybe for new parents. But I think we're going to have a surprise because Gabby is a very close parent to us. She's part of our family. She's always been willing to help us and listen to our doubts about parenthood. And in our case, because we're alone in this country, she's been very helpful.
It's a great support for new parents. And even more so if they're in our situation, we're foreigners and our family and friends are in another country, far away. So it's really good for the program to support us emotionally and emotionally in various aspects of the program that helps us keep moving forward with this new adventure.
It helps you to see the different resources that the community has for new dads. So I think it's very helpful.
There's not much to add, but I think it's the same.
We've learned a lot here. It's helped us, through this program, to continue to grow the child with good advice and so on.
And I think it's also been very important, the book, and knowing what activities to do with Maximo according to his age, how to stimulate him, how to prevent him from the danger of the car.
Look at him. He's calm and very beautiful here.
When we don't know how to connect, we communicate through Zoom or a telephone call or text.
Where did we go? Because it's been our house. Sometimes we go to Welly's, it could be in the park. Gabby comes. How do we summarize how we've been going on our week? Or what have we done again, how was the job? Then we do the book activities. We see if we can do a new puzzle for Maximo. Sometimes he evaluates how is his motoric function, what have we learned, new words. And we play a little bit and talk.
Personally, it helped me to obtain my license to drive, which was an objective that we had in terms of our family to be calm. So I think it was fundamental, the support.
The goal of the program is that families be healthy. And that families be healthy means children be happy, healthy children. And that in the future, adults be healthy and a better world. So it's good.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you've got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom. So it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me, like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know. That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years. Jeanette said, yeah, I know, I'm going to be with you for five years. That's when I said, well, I guess I can trust her. She's going to be with you for five years.
I think it happened after the second visit or something like that, where we formally met. And then I think the second visit was more calm. The atmosphere was very familial. So I felt very comfortable.
I felt like she cared for Sparrow too. And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were going to be making something or learning something. And she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were going to do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for Nixle and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org, where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness, such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was going to be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was going to have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me. I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
But here, they add more things than we didn't know. How to care for her, how to develop her, how to educate her. It's good because things that I didn't know, you told us and gave us some advice. And a lot of things that we learned.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know. When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable. And I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor telling me, yeah, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent. And also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very like rough type of life. I was homeless and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
Yeah, because she's not just here for her. She's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know. They've got great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was going to have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
If we wanted to be born, we wanted to have her. So we're going to use her to make the most of it.
I think it bothers us every time we see our parents.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months. And my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy. She knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had. And she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life. And I'm glad to wake up and see her. And everything I do, I do it for her.
I also come from a separated family. I think that's why I'm motivated to be more present with her. Maybe she's not the kind of person I am. And I also understand that a father is not only the one who sets the limits and rules, but he's there to talk, to accompany, to give gifts, to play. He's not just the guide for the child, but he's also a companion to her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
But here, they add more things than we didn't know. How to care for her, how to develop her, how to educate her. It's good because things that I didn't know, you told us and gave us some advice. You gave us the advice and all those things. And many things that we learned.
Well, I thought that I wanted something totally different, like a more frigid program, to say something, not so close to family, but more like a state program designed for help. And through the program, we realized that we also have to be a family with us because we need to support in difficult moments or when we have difficulties. We've always been able to support Gabby through her program. I think it's been fundamental, the support.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
It's a great support for new fathers. And even more so if they're in our situation, that we're foreigners, that our family and friends, as Carla said, are in another country and far away. So the program is very good for supporting them emotionally and emotionally. And in various aspects of the program, it helps us keep moving forward with this new adventure.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you, you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free. And I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency.
I noticed the public hearing, item 4D of the June 4th, 2024 Board of Supervisors regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year 2425. I am not sure who wants to pick up where we left off. County Council Ross?
I think at this stage, it'd be appropriate to reopen public comment.
Okay. We can do that. So are there any members of the public that wish to come forward and comment on this item? If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine. Seeing no one come forward, Supervisor Jerdy?
Just a question. I noticed when I refreshed my page, there were a couple of new items. Are there new items in writing that someone wanted to reference for the public?
I believe there are, and I don't know who, who that is that would like to reference them. So, Council Ross?
My understanding is that somebody was going to prepare the motion and submit it to the Clerk of the Board. I did look at it prior to leaving for lunch and it appeared to be in good, good shape, but I haven't actually seen it since it's been finished. And I haven't confirmed with the Clerk of the Board that it's on file with her.
It is on file with Clerk of the Board and it should be available, as you said, online for the public.
Can you clarify what the title would be?
It would have today's date as it was updated today, so it would be 06-04-24. And I believe it is going to be the FY 2024-2025 CEO Proposed Budget. Is that correct?
If I may through the chair.
Deputy CEO Rags?
Thank you. Tony Rags, Deputy CEO. Can we move back to the prior slide? This has been revised according to that recommendation. I'm happy to read it.
Thank you for stepping up. Appreciate that. Please do.
Approve additional fiscal year 2024-25. Board of Supervisors' recommendation to fund Mendocino County Resource Conservation District, the MCRCD, $60,000 to be spent over two years funded from PG&E carbon reduction funds.
Thank you, Supervisor Hachak. Okay, please do.
We're done with public comment.
We can now close the public hearing. We've had no additional comments.
Okay, I'll move to approve the Mendocino County proposed budget for fiscal year 2425 as recommended, accept the executive office budget report and direct auditor controller to prepare the required documents for adoption of the fiscal year 2425 final budget.
Through the chair if I may.
Please do.
I would just like to clarify for the record that it is as revised, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Supervisor McGordy? Okay, we can vote by the button.
The motion clarifies with Supervisor Williams dissenting.
Thank you. We are now, we have no CEO report. That'll be June 25th. We have no legislative platform updates. There were several letters included in our consent calendar. And we are on to item 4J. Supervisors' reports regarding board special assignments, standing and ad hoc committee meetings, and other items of general. Board members, let's go ahead and start with District 1. Supervisor McGordy?
If I can find my. Or District 2.
I think Lilly got you. You're unmuted.
Okay, so two, two brief things that, yesterday I met on, via Zoom with the Army Corps of Engineers to begin the process of, of starting to prepare to study the lifting of Lake Mendocino to increase the size and going through the process of what might be necessary. Also talking about including tribal partners to, to address their interests, which could be water, which could be endangered species. And it was, most of the, the people who were there were either from the Army Corps of Engineers or from Mendocino Inland Water Power Commission. So this is the start of a long process. So there's kind of two parts to it. One is the technical part and then I think one is the political part. And the political part is something that I really believe that Mendocino County, their interests have got to be moved forward by our federal representatives, both Congressman Huffman as well as our two senators. So that's something that needs to get started pretty soon as well. The second thing to report is that on Friday, we'll have kind of a celebration of the addition of $2 million in grants to bring the design of the new Yell River diversion facility to 60%. Congressman Huffman has got funding from the Bureau of Reclamation for $2 million. So we're moving along on that as well. The good news on that is that if Bureau of Reclamation is starting to help with the design, they often will continue to, to fund the actual project itself. So that's very positive news. And kind of on that, PG&E is sort of delaying their comments. They were supposed to be finished with their decommission plan in, in June of 2024, I guess. But they're going to move it back until December of, of this year so to allow more time to try to work out co-design and see if there's, if we're going to actually go through, they have to go through a decommissioning of Van Harsdale Dam. And then Mendocino County would have to go, or I should say the Yell River Project Authority would have to go through construction of a new facility. It's better to do it all at once rather than two separate pieces because you basically have to close down the river. So that's complicated, involves building coffer dams and it's an expense. So that's, that's good news that even though they don't want us to be part of their decommissioning plan, they do want to work with us. So that's kind of related to some water updates.
Thank you. Supervisor Hachak?
Yeah. Here, Mo Haren and I both attended the Measure B meeting last week. The update from the psychiatric hospital facility is that, you know, the RFP that has been put out will close the month and that they're expecting to start construction early August. So that's moving right along and they think that the construction will take about 14 months. So the Brook Trails Special Assessment that we approved at the last meeting, we had a public session during the Brook Trails Community Service District meeting and it was very well-attended. And it's dealing with, you know, the special assessment for the emergency access routes. And so I appreciate the staff, Gwen Malala and Anna Mackin for attending and supporting, providing a PowerPoint for the people. And so it's, my understanding is that it's going out to ballot right now. And that was good. We had the General Government Committee meeting on May 22nd. We discussed cannabis and also the vegetation abatement ordinance and repurposing the grant for it. Supervisor McGordy had some comments about, did you want to talk about that? Okay. And so, so anyway, we're repurposing that grant so that we can do vegetation abatement and make it so hopefully we have a, a working model that really supports the communities and what they're trying to do. That's, that's my report.
Thank you, Supervisor Jerdy.
Yeah. So last Wednesday, I attended the Mendocino Transit Authority meeting. Headline there was, we were reviewing the coming year's budget in draft form. The sales tax at Funds Transit has lost its COVID bump. And so it's kind of back to normal levels. And so they're trying to work through different state and federal grants they still have access to, to keep the operations at the current service levels without service reductions. So, and at Monday's MCOTG meeting, Supervisor Hachak and I there, we approved the budget for the Mendocino Transit Authority as part of the MCOTG budget. And so it's, it's in process. And then this Thursday, we have the monthly Sonoma Clean Power Meeting, which we will be approving a rate structure which should guarantee the average customer of Sonoma Clean Power will pay 7% less than a customer who gets their power from PG&E. So even though everybody pays PG&E your bill, if your power is coming from Sonoma Clean Power in the coming year, your total rate should be about 7% on average less than if you're getting your power from PG&E. And then also I did a handoff to the CEO and to the planning and building director, the CEO of Sonoma Clean Power and their planning director. Sonoma Clean Power are outreach-ing to County of Mendocino to discuss, I think, as I understand it generally, just promising locations of where geothermal could be developed. I think as I've reported the board, there are three different companies that Sonoma Clean Power is working with that are also working through federal energy grants to deploy next-generation geothermal, which require almost no water, which are, require less heat to operate. And they're much smaller facilities than the old geysers that were built in the 60s in Sonoma County. And so it sounds like there's possibly one or more promising locations within Mendocino County that they're looking at for one or more of those companies. So there definitely would be some construction jobs at, at the time of developing a site like that. And, and the maintenance jobs would be very high-paid, although probably relatively few. And just geographically, while I don't know the specifics, where, where the general promising locations in Mendocino County are southern central Mendocino County. So basically, you might say south of Ukiah, along the 101 corridor would be where these kinds of facilities would be developed.
Thank you for that. Supervisor William?
Bauer Park is closing on June 24th for about six weeks for the tree removal. A little bit of a slow start. This is the Summer of '22 grant, but seems to be picking up pace. Really happy to see that the work is about to be started.
And for me, the Behavioral Health Advisory Board met at the end of last month and reviewed a draft report from that board. That reconfiguration is ongoing. We should expect applications to either be resubmitted or new applications to be submitted as that board does need to change its makeup due to Prop 1. So that is something the board, this Board of Supervisors has already voted on. It's just a matter of noticing that and getting those, those applicants. And the LAFCO Board met on Monday and we've been reviewing some coastal districts for wastewater and water. And it's just an important thing to keep on top of their municipal service reviews and sphere of influence reviews. And in the work plan for next year is inland water districts. I got to attend the Community Transitions Program, end-of-the-year school picnic program run by William Feather that has all kinds of kids from across the county and young adults that are working through transition programs, whether that's finishing up their, their high school diploma or what have you. But law enforcement comes, fire departments, it's very fun, end-of-the-year event. In unfortunate news, the community meeting that was scheduled for animal control feedback didn't happen. And so that will need to be rescheduled. But I just want to encourage the public or any folks that have questions, and this was brought up earlier. We do have a, an anonymous suggestion box located on our website to which if people wanted to submit questions, concerns, feedback to the county and don't want to go directly through a supervisor, that's certainly something that they can use if they have. That is all I have for an update. I do believe that we can adjourn. Thank you very much. And as a reminder, we do have a regularly scheduled meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM that will also have closed session. Yeah.